It's good to be in the presence of people. Been a while since we've been together in this room. Zoom is all right, but this is better. This is better. This is better. Good to see everyone. Mr. Brown has a medium and popular attire?
Yes, sir, it has.
Commissioner, for you to just go right on around, sir?
Six feet apart.
Yes, sir.
That's all right. That's good socks today.
At this time, we're going to stand Pastor Richard Hayes. He's going to lead us in vacation. Neither fault but pledge allegiance.
Good evening, commissioners and everyone in attendance. Let us bow our heads. Most gracious in heavenly Father, we are so thankful and grateful for so many blessings that you've bestowed upon us and this great community of ours. We ask now that as these commissioners, we now have the opportunity to meet in one place. We ask you to lead them and guide them, give them the wisdom and guidance that they need to make sound decisions concerning the people in those of this community, that this be a better place to live, that this be a place that we are excited about to have an opportunity to live in. And we thank you for what you've done and all that you're going to do, and ask that you would just bless this meeting on this day and this hour. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, we need to amend our agenda to allow for a proclamation to be read and for us to act on it. If we can, let's see, make that item. I guess that would be either item 4A. Yeah, let's just say that's item 4A would be the proclamation. Everything else will be in order. I'm told we need a motion to adjust the agenda since we're doing it kind of at a late hour.
Move.
Motion of second. We approve the changes. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Those opposed? All right. Minutes, let's do the minutes for them. You testing your mic now?
I mean, my mic don't.
You're all right. He said you have help. You have peers.
I apologize.
Keep it up, we'll put you in the back.
Minutes for the month of May would require our approval. Is there a second to that? Second, Mr. -- Motion of second to reapprove the meetings for the month of May. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Those opposed? Before we get to the proclamation, I'd like to, Mr. Brown, recognize the presence of the mayor of the city of Flemington, Georgia. Mayor Paul Hawkins is with us. Good to have you, sir, to be with us. Thank you for the good working relationship that we have between the county and the city of Flemington. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. A growing city. A growing city. A growing city. And we're excited about all that's coming to your city, the commercials, as well as what's going to happen with Olson Mary Road. Yes, sir. It's on the way. It's on the way. It's on the way. Mr. Brown, I want to see your thunder. You want to introduce somebody who is in this official setting?
I can. That'd be great. He's a man of distinction. We've, I think you've had a chance to talk to him on the phone. He, I wouldn't say he came with COVID here into Liberty County, but it's the first time actually in front of you. And this man is Mr. Joseph Mosley. He's the new assistant county administrator here, and I think most of y'all have already met him and talked to him, and so we're happy to have him, and he comes on and makes an immediate impact, which I greatly appreciate.
Mr. Mosley, like to say hello to us.
Hello, everybody. Glad to be here.
Thank you, sir.
Very excited.
Good to have you. Good to have you. All right. Now, our proclamation, Pastor Hayes is going to come and read the proclamation, give us a little overview of it. There's been some meetings going on.
This is the proclamation for George Floyd Day, whereas on May 25th, 2020, in Minneapolis, Minnesota, George Floyd died of injuries sustained during a showing of excessive and unnecessary force by officers of the Minneapolis Police Department. Mr. Floyd was pinned to the ground by neck by an officer for eight minutes and 45 seconds. And whereas police brutality has taken many forms in the course of human history, accountability for the actions of law enforcement at the local, state, and federal level should be the status quo rather than a rare sight. In all forms, the brutalizing of citizens by those sworn to protect and serve them is abhorrent, and whereas in the 20th century, the United States saw several periods of civil unrest and protests in response to many human rights issues raised by marginalized groups, both domestically and abroad. We as society watch division and disunity create chasms in our society during the Civil Rights Movement, the Vietnam Conflict, the Cold War, the Stonewall Riots, the Rodney King Riots, and more. These are just some instances where the American people face uncomfortable truths about themselves and each other, sometimes with permanent solutions and sometimes with more questions. And whereas Liberty County, Georgia, has a rich history of involvement in the shaping of our nation's destiny, serving as the home of two signers of the Declaration of Independence and the U.S. Army's 3rd Infantry Division, and hosting Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. at Dorchester Academy, enduring a period of respite from the Civil Rights Movement, and whereas it is because of this rich history that Heinzville and Liberty County, Georgia, are a melting pot of race, creed, color, ethnicity, religion, gender, and sexual orientation, boasting a colorful array of citizens and residents, all of which our government institutions have sworn to serve and protect. And whereas the Liberty County Board of Commissioners wholeheartedly supports our citizens and residents' rights to peaceful assembly and protects the right to raise awareness of social issues plaguing our society at a local, state, and national level. It is a right protected by the United States Constitution, and we welcome open dialogue between citizens, residents, staff, and leadership from local, state, and federal government. And whereas we know that the pain of our citizens is not our problem to deal with, it is our problem to fix, and trust is a bridge more easily burned than built. And whereas the Liberty County Board of Commissioners seeks to build bridges of trust between its leadership, law enforcement, and citizenry to better serve the community, we love and ensure that the tragedy of George Floyd is one that is never repeated. Now, therefore, I, Donald Lovett, not me, but Chairman of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 25th as George Floyd Day in Liberty County and invite all citizens to stand up for justice and equality for all citizens and end the cycle of hatred and inequality in our country. And whereas I have heretofore set my hand and called the sign of the Seal of Liberty County to be affixed on this second day of June 2020. This is Joseph Brown and Mr. Donald Lovett with the signers. With this proclamation, I'm going to go ahead now. With this proclamation, with all that is happening, if you have been anywhere around your television or radio, there's a lot happening in our nation. A lot of people are concerned, and this is not foreign to Liberty County. So we, on this Thursday, we will have a peaceful protest that the United Ministerial Alliance will be leading, will be heading up, where we've had a great response in bringing our citizens together and having a release and an opportunity for us to look face to face and deal with something that is so near and dear to the hearts of our citizens and those that are part of this community. So we do encourage, I give you a personal invitation at this time to come out on Thursday and be a part and stand with us. We'll have the city officials there. The pastors are going to be leading the charge and just trying to make sure that this community is a better place for all of us to be a part of. With, I know that some of you may have heard some things prior, some whisperings. Our intent was to make sure that all of you were informed, but we wanted to make sure that our i's were dotted, our t's were crossed, and that we don't bring you something raggedy, that we bring you something prepared, that is organized, and that you know what you're going to be a part of and know that what you're going to be attending will be done decent and in order. So at this, I do invite you all at this time. If you hadn't heard, you are invited. We do welcome your presence there, and if you have any questions, I can entertain them if you do. Yes. Time is six o'clock to seven o'clock. We've already collaborated with the county sheriff department, with the city of Heinzville Police Department, and with some other groups that are within the city limits that we're going to be collaborating with to make sure that this goes forth in the manner that you would expect it to.
But the lineup, I guess you want?
Lineup.
That's still fluid.
Let's see if I still remember. I don't want to open my laptop. We're going to have, we're going to open with prayer. We've got Bishop Bedden is going to have some words, kind of set a foundation, an introduction. A young lady that organized, 19-year-old young lady, bright, sharp-lung young lady that organized a protest on Sunday is going to be there, and she's actually going to speak and bring her group there. We're going to have some others that are going to come. Actually, it's Pastor Scott is going to speak. Representative Al Williams is going to come and speak to us, and our commissioner chair, Chairman Lovett is going to come over, and the mayor of Heinzville is going to speak, have some words at the event.
Where is it, Pastor?
We're going to be on the steps of the Justice Center, right on Main Street, and we'll shut down.
It's not a march, it's just going to, we're just going to assemble there?
That's where we'll end with the assembling. We're going to march from the parking lot over where Planet Fitness is and enter onto Main Street in between the gazebo and the AmerisBank Drive-In, the small road that runs between there. We'll enter Main Street right there at that intersection, which will avoid that traffic light with the crowd that we expect to have.
Okay. And I guess if y'all drop some paper, y'all will pick it up, so we won't have to do it the next day?
That is, we plan to be good stewards. We're going to promote all of that. Plan to be good stewards.
Any other questions or comments from? I know the city was signed theirs when? When would they do theirs?
On Thursday. Thursday at 3:00.
All right. Now, there's some language that you and I discussed that did not make it to this proclamation. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Do we want to revisit that, or are we just going to?
For the sake of time, I think we'll be good for Thursday, and we're going to be pushing to follow back up with, you know, our commissioners and our local officials to get some of that.
You might want to share what that, a little bit what that language was about.
The other, some of the language that we want to make sure that we ensure the citizens of some of the things that are happening behind the scenes with our sheriff department, with the police department, and the expectation that we would have as citizens concerning how the training, sensitivity training, when it comes to people of color and different ethnicities, that we have that type of sensitivity training, dealing with racial issues that may arise, how often that they're receiving that training, how things are going to be enforced in the position where we may have something that arises like a George Floyd type of issue. What is the process? What is the procedure? And then where we would have opportunities, the citizens would have opportunities to get involved with their community, with the city, with the county, and the decision, some of the decisions that's being made, such as the Citizens Academy that the sheriff department I know has, and the Heinzville Police Department has, the Citizens Academy, voting, census, all these different avenues that they have to have a part, the boards that we put out to the community that sometime you never get anyone to feel, all these avenues that they have available to them, these resources that they can get involved. And if we need to go any further with citizens' involvement, we'll kind of look into that also.
I think that's the missing piece.
Yeah.
What happens after the march.
Right. Right.
That's the missing piece we need to do.
Right.
Work on that.
Chair, I don't think my mic works anyway, but I do have some suggestions to that committee. I guess I could get it to you, and then you could forward it to the powers that be at that time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right.
We welcome you being a part.
Who has the original? Mr. Brown, you?
I get invited out here.
Pastor Hayes, you want to come stand here, sir, for the photo op?
Sure.
Comedian one. Commissioner, I wouldn't invite you, but you break the social distancing law, so.
Mr. Mosley, I was going to ask you, did Bob leave the camera?
Hey, Commissioner Gillik, I was going to say, I mean, I know this is a fine, well gentleman right here, but I kind of feel offended that I'm not the only one who wore bow ties over here anymore.
Yeah. Yeah, I talked to him about that when I first met him. I'm going to fix that, so you'll be the only one after the day.
I'm just with the photographer.
Yeah.
I kind of like his bow tie though.
Thank you, sir. All right. Chair Tina, motion to go into public hearing to discuss the budget.
No move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Now the public hearing to discuss our budget. Ms. McGlaughlin?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here to review the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget, and I'll just go over some of those highlights and those summaries for you. Tonight's meeting is the public hearing. You will have a called meeting on the 18th to adopt your budget. The original budget request came in at $41.3 million. We met several times, went over various department line items more than once, went over the revenues. We identified about $5.9 million worth of budget cuts to bring us to a proposed fiscal year 21 general fund budget of $35,415,454. When we compare that to our current budget of $32.6 million, this actually represents an 8.5% increase, a total increase of $2,786,146. Here's a summary of the revenues, the revenue groupings, actually, and you can see the change by groupings, with the largest change being in your general property taxes. And general property taxes includes several different line items, not just real property, but includes your real property, your personal property, your mobile homes, your timber tax, your railroad, your intangible tax, your real estate tax, and your TAVT. So collectively, that's your largest revenue groups, and it does represent the largest increase. You'll notice a couple of the line items actually decreased, and that was based on some historical trends that we identified and we reviewed. To give you a more graphic look at that, this kind of illustrates for you exactly what the impact of your general property tax is. It makes up 66% of your general fund revenues. Your sales and use tax, which is just your local option sales tax, is about 9% of your budget at 3.25 million. Your charges for services is another 9% at about 3.13 million, and then fines and forfeitures are your fourth-largest line item at 6% at 2.2 million. So as you see, when you think about all of your revenues, actually, your general property taxes are really the only revenues that you have any influence or control over. The other revenues, you really don't. When we look at those historical trends, this is actually a graph of your general property taxes for the last 10 years, and you can see where we started in 2011 and how we've grown. This does not always mean that the millage rate went up every year. It could be a combination of several different things. It could be a combination of real growth in the digest or reassessed growth in the digest. There's actually been a couple of years where we rolled the millage rate back but still generated more revenue. So I know between, oops, I'm sorry, between, I think, 17 and 18, 17 and 18, we actually reduced, we rolled the millage rate back, but we generated more revenue because we had that much real growth. Again, the other thing that plays into that is the exemption. So when you consider your digest, you have to consider the real growth, the reassessed growth, and the amount of exemptions that the county has. And as you know, we are rich in exemptions, and they continue to climb every year. When you look at the other three largest revenue line items, your sales tax, this is what it's done, and that is a direct reflection of your economy and the amount of vendors producing some of those sales for you. So as we continue to get businesses in the city or the county that help to generate those sales tax, we will see more revenue as the population changes for various things, whether it's a deployment or whether it's a pandemic, that does influence and impact your general sales tax, your local option sales tax. This orange line here is your charges for service. These are things like prisoner housing fees, what we charge for administering the district attorney program, these are your animal control fees, these are your, all the different types of fees, license and permits and those type of things. So your charges for services. Now, you'll see right here where it shot up. So there were a couple of things that happened between, I guess, 17 and 20. Noticeably, we started receiving a lot more prisoner housing fees. At one point, that went down significantly, but then we started taking in more marshal inmates, more prisoner, more prisoner housing fees. Additionally, when sales tax six came on back in 17, and we had a full year of it in 17 and 18, we received more general indirect cost. That's what we charge, that's what the general fund charges, sales tax. They charge a 4% to the sales tax fund to help administer that sales tax program. So that generates money for us through the way of indirect cost. And then finally, in 2018 and 19, we began billing for the library, which in years prior to that, the Live Oak Public Library System used to do their own billing. But now, we bill the city of Heinzville and the city of Midway and the city of Riceboro, so we show that as a revenue. Of course, we also have the total expense of it, but that's another reason why your revenues for charges of services went up so much in the last three years. And then your fines and forfeitures, they're a direct reflection of how the courts have done, how your ticket fees are, and how those court fines are coming in. And that's, you'll see that we've kind of tapered down the last few months, and that's been a direct impact of the COVID stuff. But I do understand that those deputies are now back out there, working the interstate and generating some more revenue that way. So your summary of expenditures, salary and wages up 5.74%, and employee benefits are up 12.29%. The majority of that pertains to standing up a full-time fire department. We talked about this last year when we had our budget hearing. We also talked about it again when we adopted the millage rate of what it was going to take to actually establish a full-time fire department. The majority of that relates to those 18 firefighters and their benefits that will take place. Additionally, our health insurance premiums went up 5%, and the amount of retirement contribution required for the defined benefit plan increased by 2%. This is just taking those expenses and breaking it out in a different way, so you can kind of see how those group. Now, why did that save value there? I don't know what happened, but on your paper thing, anyway, public safety is actually 40%, makes up 40% of your functions. General government is 28%, and judicial is 15%. I apologize for those not showing up here. I don't know why they didn't, but they showed up on your paper. But collectively, that's how they group, and you can see public safety, which includes all of your sheriff's departments, your EMA, your fire, your animal control, your coroner. All of those are your public safety departments. And then your administration, your general government, is going to be all of your general administration, finance, data processing, the assessor's office, the tax commissioner's office, voter registration. Those are your general government. And then, of course, judicial are all your courts, your state court, magistrate court, state court judge, probate court, your court reporters, judicial administration. So when we break it out one more different way, you see that 64% of your expenditures are mandated by law. 33% are essential services, and 3% of your budget is discretionary. And let me just show you what some of those are. So you see your mandated services are a little more than 22 million, and you can see all of these, and we've gone over these before, are your mandated services by law you are required to provide. Your essential services and your discretionary services. Now, there could be some discussion about what's considered essential, and I'm sure that's somewhat subjective. I'm sure some people would say, well, you know, recreation really isn't essential, you know, it's discretionary. Some would disagree. Some would say recreation is very much essential. The same thing with some of these others, roads, animal control, fire protection is not mandated, but certainly we've identified it as being an essential service that we need to provide to the county. And then, of course, your discretionary services. In this budget, the new personnel is about 685,000. Of that, about 651,000 relate specifically to the firefighters, and we have identified those in stages, so that, of course, we can't hire all 18 at once, we wouldn't be able to even if we could find them, but we've identified bringing those on in stages, and we've identified that it will probably be somewhere around 651,000 for the full-time firefighters. Then there's longevity in there, which isn't required, but has been in there in the past. And then as far as capital goes, you've got equipment in there for 230,000, you've got some vehicles, some software and computers, and some furniture and fixtures. There is no cola, and there is no merit in this budget. Issues when you think about your 2021 budget, we will continue to monitor general fund revenues. As you know, we don't get to see the digest before you adopt your budget. So that is a little bit of a challenge for us. That actually brings a challenge because we don't know ahead of time what that digest is going to produce. But as we do every year, we're going to monitor the revenues, and come the time when we actually receive the digest, we'll be able to identify if some of those other revenue line items have been able to be increased to take the burden off some of those property tax numbers. These are the best recommendations that we have, based on the estimates that we have at this time. And again, once the digest is, once the digest is presented, we'll be able to determine whether or not we need to go back into the budget and cut anything or adjust accordingly. And finally, we will continue to monitor the expenditures and make sure everybody's operating within their budget, continue to pursue cost savings, eliminating overtime unless absolutely required, continue to monitor service contracts and pursue cost savings through bulk purchasing, and monitor the use of county vehicles when traveling out of county and on county business, and adhere to your fund balance policy to ensure that the county... the county maintains a fiscally responsible level of fund balance while also being able to identify uses for it. That's all I have, unless somebody has something specific.
Question from Ms. McLaughlin. Let's see, from the commissioners first, then we'll open up to the general public. Any questions that we all have? Keep moving. For Ms. McLaughlin.
Well, you know, before COVID actually impacted us and we shut down, we had collected the bulk of our real property tax. Right now, I would consider us in the mobile home tax season. Those bills are out, and he's collecting those. I don't think they're open to the public, but payments are still coming in, and they are seeing people, I believe, still by appointment. I think you can go outside and sign up, and they bring you in, kind of one at a time. People are mailing a lot of stuff in and paying a lot online, but we have continued to get our monthly payout and our TAVT.
The only thing that the Georgia Department of Revenue offered a waiver on at this time was a renewal of car tax. Extension for those, but everything else remained intact.
Yes, ma'am, and I think later on in our discussion about reopening, I think they're trying to target the same date. We've already got protective equipment up in there, and Mr. Jones has been in contact about reopening on that same day.
We will start, well, what's going to happen is they will begin their hiring process, is my understanding. And it's going to take probably the entire year to be able to get eighteen people hired, eighteen firefighters hired. It's, apparently, it's very difficult. You know, it's not like an administrative clerical job where you're going to get seventy applications. That's not going to happen.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
On that, on the eighteen firefighters, it's going to be on staggered. She's not going to try to bring all of them in at the same time.
That's right. Right. Right.
So I think what we, what the committee talked about doing, and what we talked with the fire chief about, we will advertise for them all, but the availability in the region of those firefighters will know in itself. We'll bring them on as we can work them in the shift pattern, so that they're consistent with the amount needed for a shift.
Right now, we only have one station that, two, like George, working on it.
Well, actually, we do have three. You know, we can sleep them at the East End right now, at the Sunbury Station. So you do really have three. Lake George, probably not as well along with the other two, but we're making modifications that could be ready.
And, Mr. Chair, I guess I have a couple of questions as well. I guess since we're on the fire service, and I know we're collectively talking about hiring eighteen, and I know we're doing staggered, so how are we looking at the process? You know, are we looking from top to bottom or bottom from top with the hiring process?
My guess is they were going to hire the firefighters from bottom up. And because they already have a chief and a deputy chief.
Right.
And I want to say they have a captain and a captain. So now, we need the firefighters.
Right. That we're fulfilling from the bottom up. All right. And then also, whenever we discuss in the budget, and I know we go through this every year as well, have the tax commissioner given us, I guess, his projected collection rate?
He's, actually, I got a billing and payment status last month, and he was at ninety-five percent last month.
Okay, so ninety-five percent.
Already.
Okay.
Which is really good.
Excellent.
Especially for last month.
I'm not complaining. Right, I just.
And, you know, so I haven't gotten it as of the end of May, and so he still had May and June to get the other five.
I guess this is a good time, Commissioner Fraser, to show the flip side of that. So we appreciate the citizens.
Absolutely.
For making that happen.
Right.
In the midst of a pandemic.
I appreciate.
In the midst of a pandemic.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Again, I'm kind of down here. But I was going to make sure that we tell the citizens that we fully appreciate them during the pandemic and the additional obstacles that they had to go through to even think about us during this time, because I know it's a hard, difficult time for everyone, not just in Liberty County, not just in Heinsville, but throughout this country. So, you know, I just want us to acknowledge that, you know, we appreciate the citizens for fulfilling that duty that we all have. And also to make sure, let them know that we are, you know, good stewards of the money and that we are not frivolous with the spending. And, of course, you know, we have things that we're mandated to do from the state, but just like you were saying, there's a lot of things that we do here that a lot of other communities don't do.
Right.
That really makes Liberty County what we are and make us Liberty County proud. I know you heard it, Mr. Chair.
I've heard it.
Cool, cool, cool. And then I just have one last question about the, and I know in the footnotes at the bottom row, it's up there now, that we're talking about eliminating overtime unless absolutely required. I know the departments that we have total control under, you know, we can kind of monitor that, but has that been sent out to our constitution officers about that same policy?
Every year. It's been sent out.
I love that political correct statement. I appreciate it.
I learn from the best.
I have. Cool. So I just wanted to make sure that not only the departments that we have control over, but that the constitution officers as well understand what we're going through, the trials and tribulations, so we all be on one accord.
Yes, sir.
I have to give them credit. Their wish list wasn't really bad this time.
No, and the letter that came in at the end kind of said it all, so.
Oh, yeah.
It did, it did.
That was a great letter. Thanks.
So they're in the game.
I understand.
But more to your point, I had direct conversations about overtime, and you can ask the chief deputy about that.
I mean, I was talking in general about all the [inaudible]. But I appreciate that.
Yeah.
There we go. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that once we adopt this budget, can anyone come back later and say that I've asked this question this time? Come back and explain anything that this budget is about.
I mean, they can come back and ask you whatever they like to ask you, but then it would be up to this board to amend your budget.
That's the process.
But we can also go back and cut.
If need arises.
Well, now, hold on here. Once you adopt this budget, you can cut the departments that Mr. Brown controls. That's what you can do.
But nothing stops us from asking the others.
Absolutely, absolutely. We ask every time.
Just like Governor Kemp is asking right now, we do the same thing, same reply. Any other questions from Ms. McLaughlin before we open up to the audience? All good down there? Ladies and gentlemen, now it's open to the audience to ask any questions you might want to ask about the proposed budget for Liberty County. I think Ms. McLaughlin's done a good job of explaining it. She, and I'll tell you this, none of us came here knowing all this. By being commissioners sitting here, we learn more and more every year, so that's how we became as, basically as well versed as we are. So we certainly think there's no bad question. So if you want to ask something, now's the time to do that. If not, this time she and Mr. Brown will be available.
Yes, sir. And so as part of the verbal thing tonight, we are monitoring on Facebook, we've been looking at the questions here. There's really only one that pertains to the budget. Can Ms. McLaughlin recap the slides that had technical issues during the budget?
Which ones?
And I think that's probably the last.
So my guess is that the version of PowerPoint that I used was different than the version of PowerPoint that's up there behind you, because that's the only reason why I can figure that this didn't show up. The values are right here, so public safety, it's forty percent, general government, it's twenty-eight percent, and judicial, it's fifteen percent. Again, they're on the printed copies you have, and I don't know why it's like that. I have to defer to my technical guys.
But can you, but you didn't go over, I'm sorry, I'm reading the comment, but you went back over the material there.
So public safety, does that answer the question? It's forty percent, and public safety includes your sheriff's department, your detective's department, your narcotics, your jail administration, your Flemington Law, your school resource officer, your coroner, your animal control, and your EMA, I believe. Those are all your public safety functions. General government would be your commission, your administration, your finance, your data processing, your elections, your government buildings, your tax commissioner, your tax assessor. No, that's actually in public works. Those are your general government, and then your judicial are all of your courts, as I mentioned, your state court, your state court judge, your superior court, your law clerk, or your law court reporters, probate court, magistrate court. And then those others, public works, are going to be the road department and your first vehicle, the first vehicle shop. And then your culture and recreation is going to be what you transfer out to the recreation fund, and it's also going to include the expense for the library, and then your housing development and your health and welfare. Those are things like your Hampo stuff, your, the money you give to Senior Citizens, Inc., the money you give to the chamber, your LCPC stuff.
Youth Development is under that one.
Youth Development. Trying to think of some of those others off the top of my head. I hope that answers the questions.
If you've got a detailed budget there, would you?
I do. I do.
So question within the revenues, I noticed under line item one hundred thirty-four nineteen forty-five, tax administrative service city, we anticipate collecting five thousand dollars. And that's for the collection of city taxes that he does there. Under the line item one hundred thirty-four nineteen forty, commission on tax collection, we anticipate collecting six hundred and fifty thousand. Question, what's the difference between the two? Is one what the City of Heinsville pays the county for collecting taxes, and maybe the other is collecting some other taxes? Seems to be a large difference.
So there is a large difference. We collect, we charge the City of Heinsville five thousand dollars to collect city taxes. We do not get any commissions off of that. The commissions on the other line item, the very large one, is the commissions that we earn on the collection of Board of Education taxes. So there's actually a commission that is taken off of the top of their taxes, withheld and turned over to the board for the collection of their taxes. So one is the Board of Education, and that's a commission-based, and then one is just a straight, we'll charge you five thousand dollars.
Actually, that was a great question. So I guess off that question, I'm going to ask the question. So why with the Board of Education do we get a percentage, and with the city?
So, I'm not sure legally what the law states.
Right, I was going to say, is it state mandated?
But Board of Education, there is a maximum amount percentage, it can be.
Right, I know, it's capped off.
Yeah, it's capped, and so when the commission adopted it at the time, they set it at the cap rate. So that is the current cap rate percentage, just there, and I don't remember the exact percentage.
It's either, it's either two or two and a half percent, I believe. But we do, we do charge the max. Now, the City of Heinsville, there's no requirement for the county to collect their taxes. It's just.
Something we do.
Something we do.
Okay.
I do believe that they have a separate contract with the tax commissioner, but I wouldn't know anything about that. But it's, but the county just receives five thousand dollars for collecting city taxes.
Right. And I'm with you, because actually, that's only.
That's the only city that levies a milage rate. Right. And we, you know, that's a very small amount of money, but we charge other cities very small amounts of money for other services.
Services that we provide, right.
Right, like the two hundred dollars a month that we collect on those things.
There we go.
Kim, I guess while we're here and we move on, you, either you or Drew might want to address the latest charge, expense we had to absorb for elections.
Which one? There's been a couple. You know, we had to, there are new voting machines and new requirements for those voting machines, and new printer costs and stands, and then the absentee ballot box. So there were significant tens of thousands of dollars that had to be spent. Now, we did get some reimbursement from the state for some of that, but not for all of it.
So when you're not reimbursed for all of it, how do you pay that bill?
You continue to do more with less, Mr. Chairman. We've gotten very good at it.
So those are behind-the-scenes things that the citizens wouldn't know, but that's why I had you.
That's true.
I had you address that.
There's going to be an added expense along with that, if we're trying to work out where we can store those voting machines also. We're going to leave some space to do that. There's just nowhere to put them right now.
And you can't just put them in a tin shed somewhere.
And it's got to be in a secure, air-conditioned environment. We get, no, sir, we got another, but it's.
Go ahead, then.
Are there any revenues that are being collected by any department, elected or county, that is not accounted for by the county in the budget?
There could be possibly, but by law, those elected offices would keep those. So what we have is everything that I'm aware of and have access to.
And I think what's mandated for all of the budget processes, I don't think those agencies are, if there are any, are regulated by the budget process.
I noticed at the bottom of the page, there's no COLA, all the merit.
That's correct.
Is that still possible after the end of the year? COLA merit?
At the end of next, at the end of next year?
Well.
Anything you.
I guess you're right.
Yeah, anything you do now would actually have to change this budget, because you would have that for a whole year. I would caution you to wait until you see the digest, because at this point, you're not even sure that the digest will support.
What's here.
What's here. And I think just from conversations through the budget hearings and even through last, you know, the last milage rate, I was under the impression that the most important thing in the next year was standing up a full-time fire department for the county. And so I think that's where the focus is for the majority of you, and I think trying to do anything like a COLA or merit, although I support it, because, you know, as I mentioned, it's hard to see, it's hard to give people incentive to do more and better if they know there's, there's no reward. But at the same time, I do think everyone is appreciative and grateful to be fully employed, not have ever been furloughed. We have a very good workspace area. We have a very good workspace area, environment. And I think that's something to be grateful for in and of itself.
I mean, I agree with what you're doing. I just wanted to make a clarification to everyone out there that's listening.
Yes.
The direction that we're going, it's not an easy way to get there, but we have to do it.
Yes. I would, I would say that you, hopefully you don't go multiple years again without administering a COLA or a merit because then you, you really start to lose good people and you start to fall behind. And it's hard when you have somebody who is in a position and say has been in there for four or five years, and then a new person comes on and they make the same exact money. That's, that's a hard pill to swallow for a lot of people. So I hope that in the next year or two, you know, you are able to make that happen, a COLA or a merit, to try and differentiate some of that. The problem with the COLA is, the COLA moves to scale. So it doesn't do anything to differentiate an employee's good work.
So one last note there, you did do an update last year to date to the UGA plan. That was noted that, because as you'd slip three or four or five years, what you're referring to compression happens inside of those factors. And so COLA moves, the COLA doesn't help the compression, the merit does. But the COLA does help the wager paid on the outside labor, compared to what somebody would start at when it came in, versus our labor. But there are two issues that we can.
Yeah, the UGA study, I think, really needed to take place because it had been nine years since we had a merit. Now, you had given, I think, three or four COLAs, but there was no merit. And so I think that's what the UGA study kind of focused on.
Thank you, Kim. Another question?
Well, just one more comment, and I guess I can answer this one. A comment about, thank you for answering the detail on the one slide. And inquiring as to itemize information that may be available there. And I'll answer that by saying, yes, that's up on the web, the detailed report that you're looking at there, this broken down by line item by department, I guess, the very detailed breakdown that we have on the budget proposed. That is out there, that will remain out there. The commission will adopt at their mid-month meeting, and then that document will still be available for review then as an approved budget.
Right. And most of you know, my department has an open door policy. So you can make an appointment or call me or email me, and I'll be more than happy to share with you anything, any information that we have. I like to be completely transparent.
This commission has an open door policy.
Yes, sir. Yes.
I just want to make one statement and also just ask, first of all, I, let me let Ms. McLaughlin kind of unexplain how we do our budget process. I mean, just like 10 seconds on different, how we do it on a county level because of where our budget starts compared to how municipalities do. And, you know, how we basically do an estimation.
Yes.
Because of, you know.
We do, and like I said, we don't, we're not fortunate enough to see what our largest revenue line item is going to look like. We have to adopt a budget for that, so it presents a challenge. But as far as like going through the budget, once we get those budget requests and we compile them in your budget books, and then we sit down and we go through every single department, every single line item, and I, and I provide for you three years' worth of actual historical data on every single line item, whether it's expense or revenue. I also give you the current budget and the year-to-date actuals, and then the proposed amount, so that you have everything that you should need to stand, to sit and make a decision of what a department should be able to operate on. And if those departments put in a request for something higher or something different, then they were required to provide a narrative and a cost estimate of why something is needed and how it's going to help them and how much it's going to cost.
Right. And then also, Ms. Chair, I just wanted to make a statement about, you know, about the merit and the COLA. And of course, you know, every year, we try to do everything that we can to take care of our employees. But I know since this pandemic, I've been on multiple Zoom calls with other county commissioners throughout the state. And truly, we're blessed to have not have been to the position where we have had to forlo in our employees. And I've been on calls even recent as this week on some of the stakeholders that I sit on where they're forlowing their employees, maybe either one, once a week or twice a week. So trust me, and what Commissioner Stevens was saying, you know, we, everyone on this board, you know, we would love to be able to give the COLA and merit every year. But being good stewards of the money that we have, we also have to make sure that we have a real balance. And again, I'd rather us hold the line than have to, you know, let anyone go or do any furlough. So also, you know, I just wanted to make that statement, not just for us, but, you know, for the citizens to understand that in these positions, we have to make some difficult choices. And I'd rather us hold the line than have any of our citizens, I mean, any of our employees, you know, sitting at the house. Just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Chair. No more questions, Mr. Brown?
I have one question. Kim, you, so what we're looking at here is a deficit of $22 million?
No, sir, that's a change. It means our budget is going to increase by $2.7 million.
So that's going to be a millage increase of?
I can't say that. I can tell you, I am cautiously optimistic that there will be enough real growth and reassessed growth that maybe we could hold the millage the same. We don't know. I don't know the level of each of those. And the third thing that impacts that is the amount of exemptions because, as I understand, those exemptions have continued to grow, whether it's the KDW, whether it's the disabled veteran, whether it's the Freeport. We have significant exemptions that sometimes in the past have outpaced the growth. So there have been years where we've had an increase in the gross digest, an increase in the exemptions, to where we have a net decrease in the digest from one year to another. And that's a real, that's a real hard thing to work with because you've, you've got growth in your digest, but the exemptions outpace it. And so now you've got a decrease in your net digest from one year to another. And if you apply the same millage rate to a digest of lesser value, you produce less income. So I can't tell you that it's going to take a millage rate, a millage increase. I know this board has talked about what happens if the digest doesn't produce what we've budgeted. It would be at that point that you make the difficult decision to either cut some things, to either scale back on, on the fire services, or to keep the reassessed growth and/or increase the millage rate. So it's, I would not try and even guess right now if it will take a millage increase because I don't know.
One note for that, too, and I apologize for not mentioning it, we have talked about this. One thing that you did last year, when you get a look at what that digest is going to do, proposed capital outlay change was about 535 as part of this, almost 536. What we would recommend is we hold off on those capital outlays until we do get a look at the digest and see what it will produce. If you remember last year, we went back and examined the fund balance to see what level we had in that and made the conscientious decision to use fund balance for any necessary capital items. That could be a way that that gets helped out also.
That's right.
And so I do want to make note that these capital items that are proposed in here, 535, 682, would be held unless absolutely necessary. They would come out of the chute then in a January timeframe or once we get a look at the millage.
Yeah, actually, the total capital is about 620. The change is the, is the 500. But yes, if you get your digest, that is one thing that we've done in the past to say, okay, for your fund balance policy allows you to say, we're going to use fund balance for the one-time purchase of capital items, not for operational expenses. And so that would be one thing that you could do when you, when you get the digest. If it doesn't produce that revenue, you could allow fund balance to cover at least the cost of the capital items, which would be about $620,000. Which is about half a mil.
I don't, I really kind of wish we'd started COLA in the beginning of the meeting and then end with something else because it's the last thing we're talking about are the employees that are here and funding the actuary for those, the retirement and all. I mean, it's, I know it's, we always are going through everybody else's budgets, constitutional officers, and looking at everything we've got and our employees, our employees. And they're going to be employees within the court system, I'm sure is going to be furloughed, I understand. So for us not to do that, I hope we are prudent in using the fund balance. But if the time comes that we have to, these employees are important to us because you can replace them, but you can't replace the knowledge that some of them's got for a period of time, just like the firemen. I mean, if we could just go off out there and hire 20 firemen that are all ready to go, dressed and suited and been through training, we'd be fortunate. But we're not going to be able to do that. So let's just keep that in the back of the mind. I mean, Mr. Fraser brought it up, that's one of our greatest, you know, resources that we've got right here, and I don't want us to. I've been in here before and we've had to do some things that's not been pleasant, and it's usually not pleasant for our employees. They've got a good job and they've worked through the coronavirus, and I haven't heard a complaint. I mean, I know personally, coming in and out of here as many times as I did, everybody was taking it with a grain of salt, moving on. And I know we'll get through it, but let's, let's make sure that we look out for these folks for the future. That's all I got.
I'm reminded that we speak, one of the reasons you invest in your community is to get dividends from your community. And when I say that, not just city of Heinzville, countywide, I think we've invested in our community, and the growth has been the result of it. Now, we didn't plan for the pandemic, but our investment is still good. We just have to wait for our investment to rebound and to bring back the dividends that we were seeing because you would report that our sale taxes, you know, was doing really well.
It was.
And then, of course, I think on the development authority side, and we've got some good industry, industrial partners, paying some good salaries. So that's part of your investment, your community, to help offset some of this. And then when I see Jeff out here, you know, LCPC's done a great job accommodating people, whether it be commercial or residential. Of course, the mayor Flemington's here, too. So we have the right mechanisms in place. We just, we're a little bit sidelined because of something that none of us could, could plan for. So we're all optimistic about what the digest is going to show. But you're right, Commissioner Walton, she's right. Then at the end of the day, though, we have to sit and put these pieces together to, to support this budget that we have here, knowing that our first commitment has been, and I hope it remains to be, standing up our fire department because we made a promise to the citizens that we're going to provide countywide, as an incorporated Liberty County, fire services, like anyone that dials 911, night or day, there's somebody coming to their rescue.
Somebody coming.
Somebody coming. So nothing else, we're going to do that. Yeah, we're going to do that. And more, I'm more, I'm not, I'm not being pessimistic, and more. We just got to wait and see, you know, how it all pans out. But, but that's why you invest in your community, you know, to get the dividends. So, but you just don't plan for. But this too shall pass. None of us know what the new norm is going to look like, you know? But Liberty County, we may be down, but we're not out. We're not out. We're not out. Any other questions, Congress? All right. So we need to go out of public hearing then. Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right. Go back into regular session. Somebody make the motion, please? Is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor? All right, back into regular session. Thank you, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, and your team for the work that you do.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Now, we had invited Dr., you going to get him on the phone?
We're going to try to do that, sir.
All right. Dr. Lawton Davis. Commissioner Thifft is familiar with him. I call him the guru of the coastal health district.
He is.
I know there has been some questions about what goes on in Liberty County, so we invited him to come and brief us telephonically.
All right, sir, are you there?
I'm here, are you?
Yes, sir. I think we are. It's totally different for everybody in the room, so we're going to try. And I think maybe Chairman, if you can hear the chairman, just make sure the speaker will pick it up.
Dr. Davis.
Hello, sir.
Good, so how are you?
I'm okay, how are you?
Good, good, good to have you with us. I was telling Dr. Davis, I witnessed him presenting to the chairman kind of board of commissioners, you know how I feel about that kind of thing? So all right, let's do it in liberty. Let's do it in liberty. So if you will, so just give us an overview of what's going on with the COVID pandemic in our area, our neck of the woods.
I can bear with you, Mr. Walton.
Okay.
Well, thank you, sir. Tell what's going on with COVID-19, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, y'all can hear me, okay, if I just speak normally?
Yes, sir, maybe, maybe a little stronger.
How about this?
Yeah, that's great.
All right, here we go. We had our first case of COVID-19 diagnosed in our district on March 18th, and the first case in Liberty County was on March 23rd. As of today, just a little while ago, your reported cases were at 82. And unfortunately, today, we received a report of the first confirmed death in Liberty County, which was an 89-year-old male who had some pretty, you know, underlying complicating conditions. Of those 82 people, cases, 38% are males and 52% are females. 66, of the ones that we know the race for, there's a couple of races unknown, but 66% are African-American, 28% are white, and 5% are of other ethnicity. And 17% of those people have been hospitalized. Looking at your zip code data, which was updated this morning at about 9:00 or 9:30, as you would expect, the majority are in 31313, which I believe is Heinzville. There are two zip codes that correspond to Fort Stewart, and they have a total of 10 reported there. And then the Midway zip code, 31320, has 13. There are a couple of other cases scattered around, but we don't normally report anything under 5 in a zip code. But that's kind of where you are zip code wise. So we definitely have evidence of ongoing community transmission, but it is what I would describe as low to minimal. Your rolling, your seven-day rolling average is only 2.1 cases per day. And you've had two days in the last week or so, or 10 days maybe, where you've had sort of little spikes. On the 27th, you had 14 reported, then on the 30th, you had nine reported. And both of those correspond to times when we had pop-up spots either a few days ahead of time in York County or in Long or McIntosh. So I believe those would account for those two blips on your radar screen. For our overall area in the coastal health district, I think that the overall serial prevalence, and that would be a term that means the presence of antibodies through SARS-CoV-2 or COVID-19, is actually very low. When we first started testing, we were testing primarily people who were symptomatic or health care providers and first responders, and so our rate of positivity was in the 8% to 10% range. Now that we're testing everybody, we're getting about. And now that we're testing everybody, we're getting about 1.8 to 2% positive tests. Uh, that's good news and it's bad news. The good news part is that we probably have flattened the curve. And so we never overwhelmed our healthcare system. The bad news means that there are still a lot of people out there who have not yet been infected in our, in what we call the naive population. That doesn't mean they're not, you know, they're experienced. It just means they've never run into COVID-19 before. Probably the best estimate of the level of penetration of the virus in the community comes from looking at data that some of our hospitals have accumulated once they began reopening for elective outpatient surgery. And they're basically testing everybody that's going to come in for a procedure. So these were by definition, the people who are asymptomatic. And the rate of positive tests in that population from several hospitals is about 0.5%. So we do not have a huge population burden that's running around with virus in our area. Again, that's good news and bad news. Um, things on the horizon, things to talk about and on the horizon, there are at least three vaccines that are in Phase 1 human trials, each of which has shown some promising early results. But it will be sometime before we know, that we prove that yes, it really is effective. And then you have to make sure it's safe, and then you have to do all these other things. So I think that the earliest you could possibly expect the vaccine would be late December and January, February. And I'm, I'm quoting Dr. Fauci, and I don't pretend to be Dr. Fauci, but he says the reason that it's potentially could be available this early is that manufacturers are going ahead and ramping up production capability based on early results. Whereas in normal circumstances, they would not do that. They would wait for the Phase 1, and if that were good, then they would ramp up and produce more vaccine, go to Phase 3 or 2 or whatever. But in, in this particular instance, they're sort of hedging their bets and taking a bit of a financial risk and ramping up their production capability such that, um, if the Phase 3 trials prove that A, it is effective and B, it's safe, they would already be in the production, uh, mode. And so vaccine would be available for the general population much earlier than is usual. There's also a medication that you, I'm sure you've read about called Remdesivir. That is an antiviral medication. Uh, it was developed 10 or 12 years ago, hopefully to treat Ebola virus. It turned out it didn't do very well with Ebola virus, but it seems to actually be beneficial uh, for a reasonable percentage of people with COVID-19. So there are multiple drug studies ongoing with Remdesivir. The other thing people often ask me about is antibody testing. And I'm going to give you again the good news and the bad news. The bad news first is that most of the antibody tests that are out there and currently available in urgent care centers or private physicians' offices really are not very sensitive or very specific. And what that means is that if it gives you a positive result, you don't know whether it's because you were previously infected with COVID-19 or if you were previously infected with some other coronavirus, of which there are several, or possibly even just some other virus in general. So they're not very specific. Um, the other thing we don't know about antibody tests is even if we were to know for certain that those antibodies had developed in response to COVID-19, we don't know that they are protected. We don't know that they confer immunity. Um, and that would go, that's one of the cautionary notes on the vaccines as well. We know that some of these vaccines are inducing the development of the types of antibodies that we expect to be protective, what are called neutralizing antibodies. They neutralize the virus in your body before it makes you sick. But there are absolutely zero tests in humans that show that the vaccine, the antibodies induced by these vaccines will actually be protective. And thus far, there are still absolutely zero studies that show that people who recover from COVID-19 are immune to reinfection. So, um, there are some antibody tests that are very sensitive and specific, but they're mainly in reference labs, like at CDC or Henry or wherever. And there are some ongoing studies that are looking, seeking to determine how widespread the virus is in our population. But those are not the rapid screening tests that are available to the general population yet. And the good news is that probably pretty soon, one of these will hit the market. And it'll be very sensitive and specific, and it'll be fairly cheap and will be easy to administer. And when we have those, that will be wonderful. Um, but we don't have it yet. So the, the biggest unknown, the most worrisome unknown about this whole opening is that issue of immunity. Uh, is somebody who contracts COVID-19, becomes symptomatic, and gets well or, you know, recovers, are they immune? We know unfortunately that there are some people who either have a recurrence or, you know, either a reinfection or it just bounces back later on. Um, I read one study, it seemed like somewhere around 10% of people might relapse or else develop a second infection. And we just flatly do not know the answer to that question yet. Um, couple of other things that are, I was looking at my notes, there are a couple of other things that would be in the good news category. We talked about disinfecting surfaces, and I would certainly encourage you to continue to do so because that is a theoretical possibility for transmission. And certainly do not shake hands with somebody who might be sick and just coughed or sneezed on his hands. But so far, there is no documented study showing confirming transmission from a surface to a human. So we don't have any proof yet that somebody has rubbed their hands on a table that somebody else was at earlier and then rubbed their eyes and gotten sick. And that's good news. Still clean your buildings, clean your schools, clean your offices, clean your door handles and your, you know, the faucets, the handles on your faucets and toilets, but, um, maybe you can take a little bit of comfort in there. Also, there have been no documented instances of foodborne outbreaks of COVID-19. We all read about, you know, uh, gastroenteritis hitting a cruise ship caused by a norovirus outbreak. We have not documented that with COVID-19. The last thing would be sunlight. It does appear that bright sunlight, particularly midday sunlight, the UV light, seems to inactivate the virus and to do it fairly quickly. So, you know, if you've got something you want to sterilize, maybe you just go sit it outside at about 11:00 in the morning and pick it up about 3:00 in the afternoon, and you're probably good to go. Um, so, uh, the last question would be, how do we ever emerge from this thing? Uh, and you've got a lot of, some people say we never will, but it would become endemic, meaning it's always in the, running in the background like several of the other coronaviruses are and like influenza is and like HIV is. Um, but certainly, uh, to emerge from a pandemic, one of two things or both have to happen. We either need to develop an effective treatment, and I mentioned Remdesivir, but we need something better than that, or we need to develop a vaccine that is safe and effective and which induces or produces immunity. In the absence of either one of those, and we don't have either one of them yet, there are really only a couple of tools that we have that have been shown to be effective. One is social distancing. I mean, we're all tired of hearing about social distancing. And then we'll come back to that in a minute. And the other is case investigation, well, excuse me, social distancing in conjunction with the other good public health hygiene practices like wearing a face mask out in public, covering your coughs and sneezes, washing your hands often, using a hand sanitizer, et cetera. The other is case investigation and contact tracing. And I'm proud of our team here in the Coastal Health District, Luke. They've been able to contact over 90% of the people who have been confirmed as having COVID-19. We interview those people and all their families if they happen to be sick in the hospital. And we get a list of the close contacts, and then we contact those contacts. And we discuss with them the fact that they were exposed, that they need to quarantine themselves or isolate if they happen to be symptomatic. There's a subtle difference in the two. Um, and encourage them to come in for tests if that seems to be appropriate. And those are really the only thing, the only tools we have in the absence of a treatment or a vaccine. Social distancing, the face mask and hand washing, case investigation and contact tracing. A couple of other notes, uh, said I would come back to social distancing. Basically, anything you can do outside is probably better than doing it inside, such as eating at a restaurant, having a meeting, you know, whatever. It seems that in instances where a group of people are together indoors for a period of time, maybe that's 30 minutes, 20 minutes, an hour or something. Think about church or wedding or funeral. If you're going to be inside with a group of other people for an extended period of time, that's six-foot social distancing. Any benefit you are going to derive from that is probably tossed right out the window. I talked to a pastor, and you know, a pastor would never tell me an untruth, especially a Methodist minister, because I'm a Methodist, um, and he is very big into choirs and singing. And he has come across some information that says the proper social distancing for choir members indoors is actually 30 feet, not 6 feet. And the reason is that you would be exhaling very hard because you're singing, and you would also be inhaling very forcefully. So not only would somebody who's potentially infected exhale more of those droplets, but the people next to them would inhale more of them. Same thing with bars. Um, you know, most of the time, you're in a small space, it's noisy. Uh, you may be slightly lubricated, so you're going to be talking more loudly than usual and laughing a lot. And you're going to be up close to the person you're trying to communicate with, because otherwise they can't hear you. And that is why bars seem to be a particularly great way to transmit, um, this virus. I read one thing recently, if you'll allow me, one little attempt at humor that said, if, if you're wondering whether COVID-19 is serious, look at it this way. The churches are closed and the bars are closed. And anytime heaven and hell agree on the same thing, it must be serious. Um, so, having said all that, um, I'll pause here and I'll answer questions.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
Questions for Dr. Dr. Davis? Dr. Davis, I'm trying to remember, there, there were some questions at one time about the number of cases-
If somebody's talking to me, I can't hear it. I'm sorry.
Did they roll off? Is that, was that the question about people? Yes, sir.
Right, I, right. We were asking about, uh, I, I guess, uh, we kind of talked about it a little bit, about, you know, do they roll off or, or if someone, uh, just like he was saying, if, if they catch it one time-
They could, they could-
If they catch it again, does that count for one or does that count for two? I think that was-
So, Dr. Davis, it was that, that do the old cases, when, when do they or do they roll off? And if somebody re-contracts the virus, does that count as a new case?
Okay. We're not actually actively keeping account of how many individuals we have. Uh, we know how many people are in what we call active monitoring at any one time, but I can't tell you exactly how many in your county have rolled off and how many are currently, uh, in, in our active monitoring program. We basically don't have the horsepower to do that, but what we do is, um, you know, we provide them with the information about isolation, quarantine. And of course, if they're a confirmed case, they have to, uh, stay isolated for a minimum of 10 days and for three days after they, their symptoms are cleared and they've been Afeveril without the use of anything that would suppress fever. Some of those people are being asked to be retested in order to, for clearance to go back to work. And some of those people test positive, we don't count that person as a new case.
Okay.
But we also don't know for sure exactly what to tell them. There are people who have what we call serial positives for six weeks. And I'm not sure that anybody really knows for sure what to do with those people. You read one article that says, especially healthcare facilities, need to be careful with those people. And then you read others that say, well, we've never been able to culture enough virus to be infected with anybody after, you know, after 10 days of illness. So I, I just, I don't know the answer to that. If the same person became reinfected two months later, and we've had that ourselves. One classic, or our best example of this is a family, uh, where she was sick, tested positive. Then her family, the kids and the husband, both, all tested positive. She recovered, became asymptomatic. They all were tested about two weeks later, they were all negative. And then about three or three and a half weeks later, she got sick again and had to be hospitalized, and she tested positive again. So is that a relapse? Or is that a reinfection with, you know, slightly different marks? I don't know. Um, but we do, you know, maintain people in our active monitoring program. And they're called, uh, if, some of them will opt to use an online app, which works intermittently. Otherwise, we call them every day and we ask them about their fever and their symptoms and how they're doing. And we do that until they reach the end of their isolation or quarantine period. And so perhaps if we get more epidemiologic help in our office, we'll be able to go back and start, you know, tallying exactly how many are there. But, um, on that active monitoring program at the moment, I can't tell you that.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, uh, number of cases that he's reporting from the State Health Department report, any of them like urgent care or adversity with, are those numbers all going to that central, again?
The question, the question is the numbers that you're capturing at Coastal Health District, uh, are they inclusive of other entities that are testing or just Coastal Health District testing only?
Well, we receive reports of every single positive test done anywhere in Georgia. So we get the hospital reports, we get the urgent care reports, we get the federally qualified health center reports, we get the Fort Stewart reports, you know, and we get, so anybody who's a resident of Georgia that has a test that's positive from whatever source is reported to us.
That's all encompassing, okay.
And I, I might point out, um, that I've sort of struck up a little relationship with Dr. Watts at Fort Stewart. And he, we were communicating and sharing data, and that's been both helpful and interesting, I think, for both of us.
All right. Be good.
Sir, thank you, thank you very much. Um, Chairman says, thank you very much. I'm sorry, you can't hear them very well, and we'll work on that as we go forward some. Uh, but we greatly appreciate your time this evening and to provide the update, and thank you for all you're doing.
Well, thank you very much as well, and it's probably better that all you had to do was hear me rather than look at me.
Thank you, sir. And we'll be, we'll be talking again tomorrow on the regular updates. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Bye.
Good, good to have the guru to report the Liberty County specific data. Uh, let's see, we have LCPC. We need to go to public hearing for a rezoning request? Chairman, I'm, all right. Chairman, take the motion to go to the public hearing?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. How are y'all doing? Good to see you again.
Good to see you too, yeah.
All right, so let's see here, rezoning. So a rezoning petition has been, uh, filed to Rezone 2.47- So a rezoning petition has been filed to rezone two point four seven acres of land, more or less, from A1 Agricultural to AR1 Agricultural Residential District, uh, sorry, A1 and AR1 to B2. So the parcel is zoned A1 and AR1 currently will become B2. Uh, was submitted by Nate Jones, the owner. Uh, property is located on East Oglethorpe Highway, described as parcel 121077. Uh, the applicant intends to sell this section of the parcel for general commercial uses. Uh, just a note, the Board of Commissioners zoned part of this parcel to B2 in 1979, and then another part of the parcel to B2 in 1993. Uh, this is kind of a weird jumble, but the map will make it make sense. Uh, this parcel is located in District One and was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission on the May nineteenth meeting. Uh, here's our legal ad and sign. So this is what the zoning map looks like currently over there. As you can see, this front part here is AR1. There's a tiny sliver here that's A1 that we're wanting to rezone as well, and this property stretches all the way back, it's about eight acres total. Uh, Mr. Jones is hoping to rezone this, this segment of it here you can see, and sell off this portion here as two little commercial parcels to someone to have frontage on East Oglethorpe Highway. And so I made a little map of what it would look like in the future. Um, you can see there's going to be, uh, you can't quite see here, there'll still be a little sliver of the agricultural zoning behind that black bar here, but, um, basically it would make this B2 zoning contiguous here, uh, and this back part will still say A1. Uh, the side, uh, the parcels on the side will still be AR1. So it would just kind of like look back here and then fly on the whole thing out a little bit and allow Mr. Jones to use that property for something. Uh, this is just a vicinity map, so you can see where it is. If you're coming down eighty-four away from Heinsville and you pass Homestown Road on your right, it'll be over here, there's the, the church is right across the way here. Uh, so our zoning analysis, uh, the property does have reasonable economic value as currently zoned, uh, it does conform to the JLS. Does it conform to the comprehensive plan? Yes, the area is designated as a commercial and mixed-use rural corridor. Uh, there will not be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties. Uh, the proposed use is suitable in view of nearby uses. The zoning proposal will not create an undue burden on transportation. Uh, this will not allow a short-term gain at the expense of long-term goals. Uh, possibly could cause a domino effect. Uh, there are no unique historical sites to be noted nearby. Uh, this parcel is not in a flood hazard area. Uh, would not be considered spot zoning, uh, because those other two portions were, again, already zoned B2 right next to it. Uh, and unique conditions, again, just restating that portions of the parcel surrounding the area in question were previously zoned B2 by the Board of Commissioners. So the LCPC recommendation is approval with standard conditions.
All right, Commissioner Stevens, this is.
Yep.
Your district, sir.
Do you have any objections, anyone?
No, sir, I've not gotten any comments on this.
None? All right.
Well, just to turn for record, I was going to say, uh, no one appeared, uh, to be able to speak at the public hearing, and we don't have any comments on Facebook about it, any questions to speak.
Okay.
Oh, question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stevens, is that, that's next to Robbie's house, Robbie that works out there with us?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Did they say anything about it that you know?
Didn't say anything about, uh, you know, Mr. Bacon didn't say anything about it at all, and no one across from the church, that's right across from Wilderness Baptist Church, and no one said anything.
Okay. And I guess it'd be, um, what's the other church right across from Wilderness?
Zion.
Zion Temple?
Zion Temple, right.
Okay. Okay.
I just, I remember you talking about, um, the car lot down there in the decel lane, you know, down there at one end of Wright's Lake. Is this going to be kind of the same thing, going to be commercial, where how are they going to get off the road there? Is there a, is there a road there that they can go down? Or is it going to have to have a decel lane if it's? If they turn off eighty-four, I know Commissioner Stevens had mentioned there's no turning lane in that road, right?
There was no turning lane at all.
So if he comes off there, will he go in Nate Jones' road?
There is a sort of a, I believe they're going to pave over it in some way, but there is a, a drive going up this way on the left side of the property. What, there's also a drive, if you come up here a little bit, and then, I don't know if you can quite see it there, let me pull back a little bit. You can see maybe behind there, there's a little drive coming in that way, too. Um, they would expect that to feed into this parcel, however, this one over here, uh, he's planning to, like I said, split this into two parcels up here. Uh, this one would probably require people to enter through the front off of eighty-four. Yes, sir. Um, that would be something we'd address when they did the subdivision of the property, which is a separate.
I knew he, Commissioner Stevens had mentioned that one time, and I have noticed it lately, right straight across from Tyson Road there, that, um, there's no decel lane and that traffic gets backed up there pretty bad, and I know that's, that could be a jam there if it's going to be commercial, but that's all I had about it. I just want to make sure that he's communicated to about that.
Yes, sir. Uh, and just for reference, uh, one of the parcels is going to be used for a sort of like a barbecue kiosk, it's going to be like a pickup place. Um, the other one, I don't believe he's found like a specific buyer yet.
Actually, the Bobby, the one we talking about right now is going to come about right there.
Uh, yeah, actually, I believe it's going to be right here about, yes, sir.
All right.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we follow the recommendation of LCPC.
Second.
Mr. Brown, we're voting, right on behalf of the bring.
Okay, then.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Motion seconded, we approve LCPC's recommendation. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand, please, for this, go to the post, all right.
All right, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
You did good.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Do you want comprehensive working plan?
Yes, sir. So it's a quick update, um, I believe y'all should have the, uh, work program for Liberty County, uh, in your packets there, if you'd like to reference those, but, uh, this is, again, a public hearing, and I've got a little thing to read here. So, uh, in compliance with Chapter one ten dash twelve dash one point oh two of the GA DCA regulations, I would like to request that the Liberty County Board of Commissioners open a public hearing. This hearing will serve jointly for the City of Heinsville, the City of Flemington, the City of Waltharville, the City of Riceboro, the City of Gum Branch, the City of Midway, the Town of Allenhurst, and Liberty County. LCPC has met with all eight governmental authorities within Liberty County and created an update to the five-year work program for each jurisdiction. That work program is available for viewing in the LCPC office. In the next few weeks, LCPC will finalize the submission to the Coastal Regional Commission, and from there, the submission will undergo review and then move up to the DCA at the state level. We expect to receive their comments in September at the very latest, and we will bring the work programs to each respective council for adoption. And at this time, I would like for the, uh, task the Board of Commissioners to open a public hearing for any comments on, uh, the upcoming work program.
We're in public hearing. Any comments? There do not appear to be any, sir.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, uh, if you close the public hearing, we'll be all done with that.
Okay. Well, chair and tenor motion to close the public hearing? All in favor? Chair and tenor motion to go back into regular session? Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
All right, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Mm-hmm.
Hello?
Hello.
Um, Trent Long has, I don't know if you saw the email or got word of this, he has asked, excuse me, that this be tabled until your next meeting, it's not ready for action by the commission.
All right.
Is that correct?
Do you entertain a motion? I don't know, we need a motion to tell you.
We just pulled it. Basically, he asked it to not be considered denied.
When does he want to bring it back? When do you want to bring it back, Trent? In the mid-month? Say we have one.
We do. We do.
So he's tabled in the one that's, that's, uh, that's recommended for approval?
Everstone Plantation Phase Two.
Oh, that. I mean, he, he's winning.
You're right, we thought that lesson.
What do we do, are we just postponing it?
He bring back the mid-month.
Well, if he postpones it, we tell him when to bring it back.
That's right.
I mean, I'm looking at this.
Two months from now.
Looking at the presentation here, it's recommended for approval.
Yeah.
Might would have got it approved.
Killing your progress. Once we are, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Actually.
Okay, so the next item we have here is the preliminary plat for Auburn Ridge Phase Two subdivision. I believe this may get a different name because there already is an Auburn Ridge, that's why Phase Two is kind of in parentheses there. This is property owned by Dryden Enterprises. It, uh, ME SAC Engineering is, is doing the work for the project. It's a forty-six lot subdivision for single-family homes on a total of twenty point one two acres. It's on Charlie Butler Road. And, um, as you may recall, part of this property was once in the City of Midway, the city deannexed it, so the entire property now is in Liberty County. The property is a combination of four deeds, it's, um, which you can kind of see on here, how do I get this pointed at work? There you go. So there's, there's, there's a little parcel here, there's one that wraps around it, and then there's two in the back. This is Oglethorpe Highway, this is Charlie Butler Road, the interchange is up here. This is flipped around from the previous one because, as far as orientation of this map, because the plat is orientated this way, oriented. This is the final, the preliminary plat, it actually is in two sections, but I want to, I showed this because there's a few things I'd like to point out that's easier to do, seeing the whole subdivision in one. Um, this property is, has a few wetlands, jurisdictional wetlands, there's a section up here, and then back in here, and it crosses under the proposed road into this area. There is drainage in this parcel here, along in here, along here that goes back, and then over to this area. So there are drainage easements that are going to be dedicated to the county with this project. It is going to be served by the Public Water and Sewer Services of the City of Midway. It includes a pump station, a sewer pump station on this parcel right here. You'll notice that quite a few of these lots also have, uh, front on Charlie Butler Road, but there is a note on the plat that there will be no access for these lots onto Charlie Butler Road. And because there is a note on the plat, we didn't feel it needed a special condition to ensure that. So, this is the first, first half of the plat on the north side, and this is continuing on to the south side. Again, you can see these, the wetlands may be a little better over here, and the pump station plot right here. So the lot standards, uh, for this development is a minimal usable lot area of six thousand square feet, and as you may recall, what we, usable means you can't, you don't include any easements, you don't include any wetlands or any land that the property owner actually cannot use. And the lots will range in size from six thousand square feet to just over sixteen thousand five hundred square feet. The minimum lot width is sixty feet, and the lots range from sixty to over a hundred and fifty feet in lot width. The setbacks are fifteen feet to the front, seven and a half to the side, and the rear setback is twenty-five feet. The dedication, proposed dedications to the county are approximate, a little over a half a mile of new streets, and the drainage easements for the functional maintenance of the stormwater management facilities, which includes those ponds and some swales. Because this, as I mentioned, that the property, the total subdivision is in four different deeds, um, to help provide clarity for title searches, a special condition is warranted such that they had to record a recombination plat, so then basically going back, you don't have to look, you know, a property could potentially be described previously in three different deeds, or part of three different deeds, it just makes it easier, they only have to refer back to the one recombination deed. LCPC recommends approval with standard and special conditions of the preliminary plat for Auburn Ridge Phase Two subdivision. Our standard conditions end, as I just mentioned, the special condition that a recombination plat have to be recorded prior to final plat approval, so that gives them some time to get that done.
Are you saying this is the same property that part of it was in the City of Midway, correct?
Correct.
And then they, more or less in turn, released it back to the county?
Deannexed.
They deannexed.
Now, the City of Midway is going to be providing them water.
And sewer.
And sewer.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm in, I'm in the county, I guess.
I was about to say.
You win. I mean, now, where, go back to your pictures.
This one, this, this shows the entire subdivision, is that the one you're?
No, I want to go back to you, one showing, uh, like, okay, right there, where is City Hall at now?
City Hall is right in this corner, right here.
Right there?
Yes, yes, sir.
And where's the Wetland Interpretive Center?
The Wetland Interpretive Center, I believe, is, is back in here, back in here. And the, this, the, um, the former city line was right around in this area, so a majority of the property was in Liberty County anyhow.
If they had the opportunity to actually annex, the way our annex goes, Mr. Brown, they could have annexed the whole thing if they wanted to, right?
Yes, right, I mean, I don't know if anything would prohibit them from doing that, because we don't have any services down there anyway. Well, I mean.
I can elaborate on another book, but if you'd like me to, they attempted to annex the city, but they annexed it because of the state laws, because of the.
Creation of an island.
They, they, they've created an island, so that's why they opted out to do that. It wasn't, it wasn't for like a track, it wasn't.
Well, they could have annexed the whole track, um, by, by taking legislative action that anybody can take, that they wanted property owner acquisition or to acquiesce in that, and one property owner did not, which would have created the island, but yes, they could have, uh, annexed the whole track if they so desired, under means that they have by law, correct?
Is my understanding that there are three properties on the other side of the road that are surrounded by Liberty County? Is that correct? And one of those properties did not want to be annexed?
So, so in the future.
And that would create an island.
So in the future, City of Midway will be collecting, maintaining the benefit from the sewer and the water.
Mm-hmm.
And Liberty County will be responsible for the roadway.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll be getting the.
And the taxes.
Taxes off of it. Is there any taxes in City of Midway, Marcus?
No, no.
Let, let me ask you a question, I, I know this Commissioner Stevens, District, how many homes total are in this subdivision? The both, both phases there?
It's, um, the Phase One, Phase One, maybe Marcus can speak to that one, I don't know, but this one has forty-six lots.
Thirteen.
How many total, thirty-eight?
Fifty-nine, right?
Thirteen in Phase One and forty-six in Phase Two.
So the, the part that's down from, that he, the other subdivision he built, Marcus, how many's in that one?
That was thirteen.
Thirteen.
No, it's not very big, it's not very big.
What is it, it's Auburn Ridge One?
Yes.
Okay.
Just Auburn Ridge, probably.
Trying to figure out what, I mean, at an average home in there, about what the tax base would be on that.
Those were, those were pretty expensive, huh?
Mm-hmm, they were. They were.
Yeah.
Or large lots, so I imagine, a little above the average, so these, the price points on these, it's, it's hard to say, but I would venture, um, closer to the two hundreds, so above, above that, so above that.
There's not been anything on it for years, so.
Yeah.
Just well-built houses on it.
Mission good.
Yeah, what, wasn't, um, there was, Joey, Mike can help me with this, but somewhere in that same area, what, there's a water line that belongs to the Development Authority, somewhere in there?
Not that one.
Not, not, not there.
Further up somewhere.
That one goes from, uh, the Midway Industrial Plant, out the backside of that, over the trade quarter west. This, this property used to be in, in the, uh, service delivery area for the Development Authority way back when they gave that back to the, for this development, and, and the free. They gave that back to the, for this development and the free development. I think we crossed the bridge a little bit, so we got a letter from the Development Authority saying that they didn't go out of.
Okay. I just remember something about the Development Authority having something somewhere in there. Okay.
Correct. All right.
Ms. Stevens?
Chairman, I'm making a motion to follow the recommendation of LCPC.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion, second, we approve the recommendation for Auburn Ridge, too. All in favor, raise your hand. It's approved, ma'am.
Yeah, Commissioner Stevens, I brought that up because I thought Midway thought they was getting a deal. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Marcus.
You all have a good evening.
GDOT Resolution, CARES Act funding.
Yes, sir. We were made aware of some funds that were provided by GDOT that could go to airports to offset expenses related to COVID. And so we applied for a grant and were accepted. And if the board would adopt this resolution, it would allow thirty thousand dollars to come in a one-time payment to the partnership that would be used to help offset expenses at the airport.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Good, bring it home.
True, sir.
I didn't, you didn't even have to finish reading the whole thing, Joey, when it was coming this way.
It says no match, too.
No match. Money, free money coming this way.
You're coming with money.
Mr. Chair, I was just telling that.
Come on, Ms. Hart.
We rolling on now.
Come on, Ms. Hart. Good to see you.
Good evening. So keep it rolling then. My name is Crystal Hart, and I'm the Twenty Twenty Census Coordinator for Liberty County. I want to say it's been a pleasure to get Liberty County counted. We are near the end of our portion. We are going to be handing it over to the Census Bureau to let the counters finish it on out. So we'll have an update of what we've been doing this last year and a half. Am I clicking?
Use the clicker.
There we go. Okay, so of course, we know the census is important for three main reasons. That's money, power, and safety. In Liberty County and across, nations across the community, I'm sorry, the country, are making sure that they're getting everyone counted so that we can get funding, federal funding, for things that we need, essential programs, everything from health care to food programs and education. Even COVID funding was based on census data, so we need to make sure that we have the right numbers for our community. The second reason, of course, is political power and representation so that our seats in Congress can be reapportioned correctly and that we can have proper districting with our state and local governments. And then the third reason is so that we can see how our community changes. We can have data to make sure we plan for the future. So because of COVID, the timeline for census shifted a little bit. I should have been done by April first, but we have now seen that the COVID timeline has shifted us to October thirty-first, twenty twenty, when the census count will be complete. So typically, the census is completed by July thirty-first. The new date is October thirty-first. So we have until October thirty-first to get everyone counted. Operations have been suspended right now, and we will be going back out in August is when census workers will go out. So right now, my job is kind of to do some virtual outreach and wrap up our portion of volunteer outreach so that the census workers can do field operations in August. So as of May twenty-seventh, our numbers for Liberty County are pretty good. We are marking, well, we're striving to be at the fifty-one percent mark, and you'll see we're at fifty point one percent. So by the time the census workers come in, we want to be at the fifty-one percent mark. So we're very close to being there. Again, the census workers won't go out until August, so we still have a little bit of time to do some virtual outreach to get our citizens counted. The nation, sixty percent of the nation, has responded, and our state of Georgia is at fifty-six point four percent. I have the cities ranked in the order that they have completion rates. Flemington is leading the way with fifty-nine point one percent being counted. When we came into this, we knew that Gum Branch and Walthiville may be low-count areas because in the twenty-ten census, they had low response rates. So we are doing some efforts there to get the numbers up. As you can see, Gum Branch, thirty, about thirty days ago, they jumped. So Gum Branch and Walthiville were at the, in the twenty percent range. And we started our initiative to get the word out and really push some things in those areas. And Gum Branch jumped up by twelve percent in thirty days. So we're now spending the month of June to replicate some of those things in Walthiville. This week, the police department and fire department in Walthiville will be putting door hangers out on the doors to remind everyone to complete their census or to call if they need help. The week after that, they will begin some phone trees where they will call individuals personally and remind them, as well as anyone who pays a bill or comes to their city offices in Walthiville, will be asked if they completed the census or assisted with completing the census. So we're working really hard to make sure we can get our Walthiville numbers up to what some of the other municipalities are, and overall, that will bring up our Liberty County totals.
Just a question. Two thousand and ten, I see where we are today, but where were we, if I don't count, ten years ago? Were we over to fifty percent?
So ten years ago, by the end of the early response period, we were at fifty-five percent. So again, we're close to that goal. Right now, we're at fifty percent, and overall, we're at seventy, seventy-one percent, I'm sorry. So by the time that the census was wrapped up on July thirty-first, two thousand and ten, Liberty County was seventy-one percent counted.
And just one last question. Because of, of course, the pandemic and everything, how will that go with us receiving the funds and also with redistricting? Will that give us, you know, the state enough time to be able to get that in place?
The timeline has been pushed back for that as well. So, yeah, you'll get your numbers a lot later than you normally did.
That's what I was thinking.
Crystal, so everybody has received a little mail-out thing?
Not, well, everyone has received the reminders, but because of COVID, the actual mailings did not reach all the household, the paper copy. So a lot of people have had the opportunity to do it online or call by phone, but those mailers with the paper copy hasn't reached every household yet. Also, the census workers, if you're in a rural area where they believe that you won't receive paper copy in the mail, like you have a P.O. box or you just have low internet access, a census worker will come drop off a paper copy at your door. So that hasn't happened yet as well, which is why we're thinking that we're seeing some of that response rate drop off because those who are waiting on the paper ballots haven't been able to get it yet because it was interrupted. So paper copy should start coming out within the next month because census workers will be activated June fifteenth to begin some field operations. However, no census worker should be knocking on doors during non-response follow-up until August.
Crystal, how are we counting the military?
The military is counted in three separate phases. The first phase is group quarter operations. And what that is, is if you are deployed or you're living in barracks, your, the installation is provided a spreadsheet to account for everyone, and they will submit that to the Census Bureau. So the first way is group quarters operations. The second way is if you are living on Fort Stewart and you are part of the on-post housing, you will complete it as though you were a regular citizen. You will count for yourself on the phone, you would do it online, or you would do it by paper, and they will be counted with Liberty County. So even if they live on the installation, they will be counted with Liberty County. And then if you live off of the installation and if you're still stationed or deployed, you will fill it out as everyone else did as well. So there's three ways to get counted.
So if they live in Long County, they'll fill it out in the Long County section. So that number there, the Hinesville number, well, basically, the Liberty County number, do we feel comfortable that we've got those folks counted yet?
Yes, we feel comfortable that we have them counted. The group quarters operations has been going really well as far as making sure those that deploy and those that are in barracks have been counted. We've worked with housing on Fort Stewart to get those individuals counted. The other portion of those who are affiliated with Fort Stewart but live off in our community, they're counted in the regular percentages that you see with the households. So there's no distinguishing them.
Thank you.
Just a few more slides. So as of June first, two thousand and twenty, we had twenty-plus committee meetings, and the committees were made up of different individuals and volunteers throughout our community. So we had over twenty meetings with those groups. We participated in more than sixty events. Most recently, because of COVID, those included food drives and COVID testing sites, making sure we were out there with signs or passing out postcards, reminding people to complete their census. We've made over nine thousand contacts, passed out five thousand stickers, four thousand postcards, five hundred yard signs. We've had seven print features, four radio features, and three TV features. We also sponsored a billboard, newspaper ads, and email marketing. Of course, the goal for us, that group, was to reach every resident of Liberty County and Fort Stewart with the message that the census was taking place and to make sure that they were counted. Our second goal is to have sixty percent of our residents counted by July first. In two thousand and ten, we had fifty-five percent responded by that time. And then our overall goal is to have eighty percent of the residents to complete the census by October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. And in two thousand and ten, seventy-one percent completed the census. So for the next sixty days, our committee plan to wrap up and kind of get the virtual portion done before census workers go out is to continue to do promotions with stickers, postcards. We have five hundred door hangers to place in low-response areas, especially those that may be rural or have senior citizens. We have about two hundred yard signs we still need to put out. So if you want to put a yard sign by a campaign sign or if you want to put a yard sign in an area that you.
That a hint?
An area that you frequently visit and you see that they are missing, we welcome that as well. I'll put it out if you let me know where. We're working on drive-through promotions, so those events that are doing drive-throughs and physical drive-throughs where there are restaurants allowing us to put promotions there, we will enact that. Church outreach, making sure that churches are spreading the word, assisting individuals who have questions about it, and just making sure that we are doing outreach in those communities as well. We're doing, increasing our website, email, and social media advertising during that time. We are doing an employee count program where we are aiming for our municipalities to have one hundred percent of their employees counted. Our library, we're working with the public library to do an outreach program. And of course, we're focusing on Walthiville since they are our low-response area. So that's our focus for the last sixty days, to finish strong with our volunteer portion before the Census Bureau sends out workers to count everyone. So there are four ways to respond, online, twentysensis.gov. You can call and give your response by the phone, one eight four four three three zero two zero two zero. Paper forms will arrive soon in the mail, or someone will come to your home and deliver a form. They will not fill it out at that time. They're just leaving a form because they know you don't have a physical mail address or that you are in a rural area that may not have connectivity to the internet. And then in August, census workers will come to the home. So if you don't want anyone to knock on your door, we ask you to fill it out online, by the phone or by mail. The census workers will knock on your door to get those filled out if you have not filled it out by August. Some things that we ask you to do, or those who are watching live, is to remind your supporters, constituents, family, friends, employees, and colleagues to complete their census. To include a census message in all your meetings, your public meetings, any event that you're hosting, submit locations to place census yard signs. So if you want a yard sign in your yard or any area that you frequently visit, just message us for those online or to let me know. If there are any events that you want us to partner, the census will start sending out workers next month to events that will have heavy traffic, and they will have tablets to help people on the spot. So that is something that we are looking to identify some events. I know one that we've identified is the Back to School Rally in Riceboro in July. That will be an event where census workers will be on-site to help individuals fill out their census at that event. And then also share census messages on social media. So that's all I have.
You did a good job.
Sure.
I'm just waiting to see with the pandemic, what's the fallout, what's the, I was going to say default's going to be. They're going to have to find some way to compensate for, yeah, yeah, that's got to, I know it's not you, but someone has to work that out.
Right.
So that is fair at the end of the day. Yeah, fair at the end of the day. I'm sure the boys and girls in D.C. are throwing that around, but I'd like to hear that. Maybe you talked to Senator Carter about it, and maybe you have had conversations because I, October thirty-first is the.
The new deadline, so they extended it from July thirty-first to October thirty-first.
I still think even at that time, there's going to be some remnants of dealing with the pandemic at that time. So, and that, no doubt about it, had an effect on everything, not just the census. So someone that sits in the capital city is going to have to work that out where no one's mistreated and no one's count that is low because of the pandemic hurts their communities. We've been working too hard for this. You had a great plan, then you had to readjust your plan.
Yes, so our plan was heavily focused on one-to-one and being at events and creating opportunities for people together.
Yeah.
Then when the census went live on March thirteenth, COVID ramped up as well. So we shifted doing everything virtually or some of those drive-through events. So we're just trying to recover from that, work through it. Like I said, starting to do things in those areas that we know have a lower response rate for whatever reason. So we'll be focusing on Allenhurst and Walthiville now.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Crystal, so, and I did mine online, so, and you said that you're going to have field workers that's going to start going out in August?
August, mm-hmm.
So they, like me, I did mine online, so no one would come to my house.
Right.
So, so we know the ones that didn't?
Right, so, well, we don't know the exact house, but by census tract, there's software where we can look at and see areas that didn't do it. So the census office has the numbers of which households did not complete it. But as far as the software that I have available, I would be able to see down to the census tract who hasn't completed in that area by percentage.
Well, I guess where I was headed, you know I did it, but Eddie lived next door and he didn't do it. So you can count him, couldn't you?
The census.
There, he gonna knock on your door.
Yeah, I mean, if we know who did, I mean, if we know who didn't and we know who did.
I see what you're saying.
We got everybody, don't we?
Well, the way that works is that for how, per household, if there is some talks going around that if you haven't filled out your census by the deadline and they are able to use the water consumption, they will use a formula based on that to give you who, how many people may live in the house based on water consumption. Again, that would still be a little off and wouldn't give us the accurate count of who's in the home and how many, well, not who, because we don't know definitely who will be in the home, but how many people are living there. So we'll get close to it that way, but if everyone fills it out.
And I can help because we know how much garbage we pick up.
Say, go buy garbage, not water. So that is something that's being considered.
Waste water.
Wasting water.
Any cars is in New York?
We'll get them one way or another, but, you know, we do need to get everybody counted. There's a lot of people here.
Yeah.
And, you know, just to look at it, and I'm going to talk with, I'm going to call them to the office in the morning, Mayor Baker. Walthiville is at thirty percent.
Thirty-three point nine.
That's, that's, that's part of my district and Maryland and Congress.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, but I'm going to get the mayor in the morning. I'm going to talk to him.
We're going to deploy them to Walthiville.
Deploy them, okay, yes. I will say, they are, they are putting in some things, some things in place, such as the door hangers and making sure that when everyone comes up to the fire department, police department, or City Hall, that they are reminded and assisted with completing their census.
Okay.
How did you?
I think I have a lot of family members that live in Walthiville.
Make some calls.
But I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that the thirty-three percent are all my family.
Oh, okay, I see how you flipped that, okay.
Right, that's how I'm looking at it.
That's TMI.
Real quick, Mrs. Hart, I want to definitely tell you, I appreciate all your hard work and dedication, especially during this time, I know how difficult it is. But can we look at other counties adjacent to us? other counties adjacent to us, especially in this district? Because, you know, the situation that we had 10 years ago with the deployments that kind of skewed our numbers. Just looking forward, just on the safe side, is there any way that we could get in contact with other communities in our district? So whenever we do contact our congressman and, and explain to him what he already knows or what they already know. I, I just think if we could get together on a collective, all of us together, and then send something to him so he know that we all understand that all our numbers are being skewed because of this pandemic, then maybe that, you know, his, he could talk to his constituents, well, I mean, the other congressman and try to give us some type of leeway. I just know, whenever we're dealing with, with government, that, you know, power is in numbers.
Any idea, listen to what Commissioner Frasier, any idea how Bryan County's doing or how?
Yeah, I can look and compare. I can tell you that Bryan County was in, in line with the state. Long County was struggling with numbers for a while. I haven't looked at theirs recently. Same with Chatham's was comparable as well. So I think everyone was experiencing some of the same, same issues. But I will say, a lot of the higher response rates for our county, I'm sorry, for our state came from the Atlanta area. They're attributing it to not necessarily greater group efforts, but more educational and access to internet and bandwidth. So in the rural areas where we didn't have access to internet, or they aren't, they haven't gotten their paper form yet, it's hurting us on the coast as far as being comparable to the numbers we see in the north.
So when the census worker go knock on the doors, then you're looking for that to make a big difference? Are you optimistic that it's gonna make?
Optimistic, but what we saw, the trend, what we saw, the trend was that only makes about 10% jump in the numbers. So we want to make sure that people are counted before they even get the knock, because those who participate at that point are more likely to get counted than waiting on the knock on the door.
And then I do recommend, Commissioner, get what you said, then if you and Commissioner Thrift and Commissioner Stevens would get with Mayor Baker and see what we could do.
I got him at 7:00.
To help to boost that, yeah. I mean.
First thing.
Not trying to take over them, but you know, to find out what we can do to assist them. I see the signs out, and when you ride around, you can see.
But Chris, one other thing now, and are those the field workers? So are we gonna be looking to employ people? I mean, people?
The Census Bureau does employment. So I will say Liberty County was the first county to reach 100% of our employment goal for the census. So we signed up.
Give us some credit.
We got census workers ready to work. Again, they were being trained. They got the phone calls, and then COVID happened. So they will, they should start getting calls again and get trained to go out in August. So the Census Bureau pays those workers.
Okay.
Okay.
You don't want to run down there and help Commissioner Stevens with Rosberg Midway?
Well, I, I can't, I can't talk when you look at Walthamville.
Yeah, you gotta get to Walthamville. Get them 20 points up, that'll help the whole thing.
Yeah, but you know, if we had that many census workers to sign up, then, you know, we, they need to really get to work, because unless, we should, I bet if we pay them by percentage.
As I thought, but we did. Liberty County was the first county to reach 100% recruitment rate for employment. And I will say, Riceboro was at 80%, 89%.
Just relaxing.
Yeah, 89% in 2010. So we definitely need to kind of revisit what is happening there, because they were one of the, the top response rates for 2010. And now Flemington has taken the crown with being consistently, consistently the top, the top runner for our community.
I just don't understand when Gary filled it out for his, he knows it's just me and Kathy. You could've just went ahead and said, hey, part of the family that is in there, kid.
I was getting late. You can tell. Crystal, thank you.
Online, by phone, by mail, if you don't want someone to knock on your door.
Let them knock.
Get counted.
It's knocking time. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Appreciate you so much. No matter what job we give you, you knock it out the park every time. Yeah. Good job. Plan amendment number two, define benefit plan.
Yes, sir. Last year, you offered an amendment to ACCG to define benefit plan to change the plan year to January 1st. You may remember that. In doing that, the amendment that was submitted did not include the other thing which we wanted to include, which was going to the elapsed time method of computing time in service rather than hours of service. And so elapsed time, basically, just what it means, for the, for the days you work, you get credit for. Previously, if you remember, if you earned X amount of hours per year, you got credit for a full year. Nobody else's plan was like that. That's the way our old plan was. So, again, this, this amendment puts in line what you were trying to put in place by your last amendment. It just did not contain this language. And so ACCG has requested that we do amendment number three to clarify that. It'll be no change, really no change. We have been using that method. We just need to do a bookkeeping item and make sure theirs is correct.
All right. Plan amendment number two. All right, you said three.
It'll actually be plan amendment number three.
It'll be three? All right. Chair and Tan, motion? Motion, secondly, we approve plan amendment number three for a defined benefit plan per ACCG's direction. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. The plan amendment has been adopted. Liberty County Youth Commission update.
Mr. Mosley's gonna provide that for you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On, when I first got here, Mr. Brown asked me to review some of the efforts of the Youth Commission. And I sat down and I reviewed it and came up with some ideas, met with Mr. Brown, also Mr. Mitchell, and we did a meeting a couple weeks ago. Commissioner Stevens was there. Commissioner Stevens lauded us and encouraged us to move forward. And on last, on two Wednesdays ago, Mr. Mitchell coordinated a Zoom meeting with the, all the young people, and I got a chance to meet with all the young people. We designated that we would meet in Zoom meeting for the rest of the term. And those dates are tomorrow night from 6:30 to 7:30, and also on the third Wednesday from 6:30 to 7:30. And at that time, we would set up a timeframe for July. We talked about a couple things we wanted to do. And one of the things that Commissioner Stevens had urged us to do was to contact Mr. Van Johnson, who's currently the mayor of Savannah, and also he's still active in the Youth Authority or Youth Commission down in Savannah. And also, we were asked to contact Dr. Otis Johnson. I did get a chance to talk to Dr. Otis Johnson, and he provided us some good ideas when he was involved with the Youth Commission. And one of the things that Commissioner Stevens encouraged Mr. Mitchell and myself to work with the Youth and closing out their year, and we could have a good form of it with the youth. And one of the things that I did discuss with Mr. Mitchell and Commissioner Stevens and Mr. Brown was, was some of the things helping the young people to understand about local government. So I put together a presentation on public policy. What does, what does public policy entail? Why is it so important to be involved with public policy? And so we've got that PowerPoint ready to go, and we want to present it to the young people. So they'll understand how important government is and how important decisions, input data that y'all review to make decisions that affect our community.
Sounds good. I didn't get to make the Zoom meeting, but I look forward to, they will have public meetings again, see those young people in action. But please keep them engaged. Please keep them engaged.
How many members are there now?
Uh, Commissioner Walton, I believe there was about
There was 15, wasn't there? Was there 15? Maybe I was counting.
I think you was counting me. But I have gray hair now. But I appreciate that update. But also, just to go back a little bit farther, before the pandemic hit, you know, we did have an opportunity to, to go up to Atlanta and meet with a couple state legislators, including our representative who represents us. Everyone knows him. Representative Williams. But we also had an opportunity to meet with, with some senators and also some, some other state reps throughout the state. We ate lunch. That was, that was a blessing that it was provided for us during that time. But the kids really had an opportunity to, to be in the Capitol during session. So they was able to see
Government in action.
A portion of how bills are, are made bills. And then, of course, you know, we had other stuff planned, but because of, of the situation right now, you know, a lot of that stuff has been put aside. But also, I just wanted to say, I want to appreciate, say thank you to all the board members, not with just this program, but from the, from the initial conversations that, that we all had about youth development and the whole, you know, the summer work program has, has been phenomenal. So this is the second phase, and, you know, we still have a couple more phases to get to. But I appreciate Mr. Mosley for stepping in and, you know, never dropped the torch from the rabid and kept running. And also, you know, Commissioner Stevens, I thank you also, you know, in my absence, stepping up and showing your vibrant youthfulness.
Just think about it. I was there in the beginning.
Yeah, I remember.
And I'll be there till the end.
I appreciate, and, and, and Commissioner Stevens, I don't think no one will forget that. I appreciate that. And I was there right with you.
All right, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Into governmental agreement tower space.
Yes, sir. This is a consideration of renewal of the agreement for the tower space that we allow to Department of Public Safety on our tower out at the old airport. It is a no-cost agreement to the state, to GSP to locate their equipment on there. So it's simply time for your consideration to renew it, and our recommendation is, is to renew that.
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
Or move.
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor, raise your right hands. Government agreement tower space is approved. All right. Administrative report?
Yes, sir. Trying to move through this real quickly. Just a reminder, on that budget, it is scheduled for, four has been designated for that mid-month meeting date, if the board meets through that means, or however you want to meet there, to be decided, I guess, by the board. But we do have it scheduled for that, for the third Thursday. The fire station construction is going well.
Got some pictures?
One, one picture from today. There were several that were taken.
Slab, isn't it?
Slab with steel. We had been waiting on the steel because of the delivery. It was stalled out. So the steel finally came. They've been ready for it, and so they jumped on it. And so they are still on schedule. So we do anticipate being finished with that building by October still, because all the other materials are there. So that's the good news for that station. We are rapidly approaching finalization on the Island White substation. And so Mr. Long will bring one thing to you related to a garage, a door opener, automatic door opener next time. Really that, and the sign, and a little bit of site work, and we'll be ready for ribbon cutting there, which is the good news. Both of those are progressing. Glad the steel finally got here for the Island Station, which is great. We, we are, as far as the Miller Park Station goes, Mr. Long is working on a park design there that would incorporate those adjacent lands for the fire station in that overall master plan. And when he has a draft of that, we want to bring that, of course, for the board to view, so that you can make comment on that for the overall master plan.
While we're working on that, make sure that, keep in mind, we want to pull all of, you know, the recreation part, you know, when we go in and do the road, if we have to redesign the road or anything, make sure that we look at both sides of the road.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Are you talking, you talking about the one at Miller Park?
Right, that's right.
I was thinking about that today. If you've got some activity going on in the park, and fire units have to respond, I was wondering, it may be better for them to go out closer to the power line.
I'll go out where they're all voting.
Right, somewhere along in there, yeah, that.
Now, keep in mind, we now have a resident up in that
Right.
out at the tower, well, opposite the tower, I mean, the water tank.
Right.
Somebody back in there?
Yes, somebody's back up in there.
Yeah, there. Right there where John Armfield used to live.
I wonder if that's part of his family.
So we'll bring that back to you on that draft plan. Of course, keep your priests of this and signal when we're ready for the potential ribbon cutting for, for the Island White Station. We're moving on there very well.
Joey, that's, that's the site you were, we went for the groundbreaking?
Uh, no, sir.
No.
This is the one that was rained out or
Oh, COVID.
COVID canceled.
COVID now.
This is down from Fort Morris Road where you turn
Okay, okay, okay.
When you're right, the property
Down there, the crystal neck of the woods down there.
Yeah.
We, we've already been down there. You remember we slipped in there before daylight that day?
Yeah, yeah.
Next to the boat repair shop.
No, but, um, but the one where we had the groundbreaking, the one that I was, that was Island White.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
It was.
Okay.
Jerry, now you know I didn't took you down there before?
Yeah, but I, you know, I, you know, all the trees, once you cross the overpass, all the trees look the same down there.
Crystal, what you gonna do with it?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown, I got a report the other day that down at the boat ramp, what was it, the last holiday, it was packed down there.
It was.
So people are really enjoying that boat ramp.
It was, and the redone pier. So the boat ramp project is almost 100% finished. DNR has dropped in the privies that are there, which is the restrooms, basically, that are septic tank based type restrooms. And we'll be servicing those. We're trying to get that service stood up right now so they can officially open. And then we may want to get with DNR to do some kind of presentation there, because that, you know, that, again, they 100% funded it. We helped coordinate a lot, but it is a very, very nice facility.
Let me say this. I was a, a young man approached me the other day, and he said, you can't do this, but you did that boat ramp down there. I said, you need to get it right. So I had to take my time and straighten him out, who actually did the boat ramp, because he was thinking taxpayers' dollars from the general fund did it. So I took my time and explained it to him. He left a little, with an egg on his face, but I think he felt better.
Yeah, let's do a little something, Joe, with DNR.
We'll coordinate with DNR on their stuff. I think that would be good, because it really turned out to be a great project. And then the last thing is something I disseminated to you for consideration, based on our last conversation, which is to look at some reopening guidelines and to establish a potential soft reopening date for county offices. And as we lead in this, I'll tell you, and I won't go through everything, because you can obviously read it. Mr. Mosley and I can answer any questions. We both, you know, participated in putting it together. And I want to say we worked with the departments and the buildings in putting it together, too, to discuss with them. We had, I had a couple of conference calls with them. We have already, you've noticed, installed Plexiglas at all the public places. That also is being done, or has been done, at the Recreation Department and at the Human Center and several locations. Not that, not that the latter is proposed for us to open right now, but we're going ahead and getting prepared. So, and working with Mr. Jerry Johnson, his crew have done a terrific job trying to balance this and reopening of the court system and sanitization of the polling places. And I, I'm not sure how they've really gotten it done. I know it's been on some weekends, but I think we're ready. I mean, I can tell you that in, in the public spaces, if we, if we want to target the same date, which was June 15th, of the opening of the Justice Center on some limited basis, and at the city of Hinesville, I think we're here to tell you we're ready to do that. Markings are in place, and staff has been briefed, and I will go over this again with them this week, if, if the board is okay with this.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
A question, Joey. Now, when you say, say it's reopening the county, and I think Commissioner Thrift mentioned something earlier about the tax commissioner, that's not just the, the departments that report to you, that's all of Liberty County?
Basically, well, now the sheriff's plan, probably a little different, even a little stepped up, because he's in the Justice Center. Although they are involved with security here, and they will be helping us, both with monitoring who comes in and how many come in to stage, especially in the tax commissioner's office. Lobby sizes will dictate how many are allowed in at one time, and the rest will be asked to stay out. And in that case, tax commissioner specific, then only so many could be allowed in the lobby downstairs before they lobby downstairs before they'd have to step outside. And uh, you know, uh, Mr. Mosley and I were talking the other day, it's kind of hard to figure out, y'all have seen it, it doesn't revolve around paydays or birthdays in May or whenever it is. Sometimes that office has 30 people in it at one time and sometimes it has five, the average per day. So it's going to be a monitoring situation and I want to thank the Sheriff's Department and Deputy Brady for working with us on, on that. So we, we'll monitor that as well as our office and lobbies.
And what about the, the courts?
And so the courts, um, the, we, we got, um, a plan that had to be submitted by Superior Court Judges, uh, in compliance with the state, uh, State Supreme Court of Georgia. And so they plan on doing a reopening on June 15th. And so these guidelines that apply to them, and I can forward those to you, uh, which will be used by the court to do it, will mean, uh, certain PPEs in place in courtrooms. Uh, it'll mean screening of folks that come in the courthouse, temperature checks, uh, will be done of everybody that comes to, to the gate. There'll be some, um, staging differences. Uh, State Court, for instance, will use the Grand Jury Assembly Room, because it's got more room to spread out. Uh, Judge Rose on Superior Court side did say they, uh, they plan on continuing during first appearance hearings and things remotely, uh, in virtuality, which is great. That's something we've, we've hoped they would do for some time. So there, there'll be some changes there. Yes, sir. And those will vary a little bit different because of the enhanced security of the court system.
And I, I don't know, I, I guess this might ask a question, Mr. Chairman, that, um, there was talk, I don't know if it happened here, but did, did they let some people out of jail because of the, the virus?
They did, they, um.
Did, did we do that here?
Yes, sir.
Are, are we going to come pick them back up?
I can't answer the latter, but I can, uh, I can tell you the, the formal question. Absolutely, they did. Uh, the judges and everybody worked real hard to get misdemeanors out, uh, and introduce that jail population, um, so that we wouldn't risk exposure in the jail population out there and have to deal with what some counties dealt with. So it, it was a common occurrence statewide for what they tried to do.
Mr. Brown, when you say opening up, what about parks altogether?
So, so the, I guess the second half of that is, uh, to give you a report back, uh, we did advertise for lifeguards. We have been successful and we are set, um, to open the pools, if you so desire, on June 8th. Which, which is, uh, next week.
Monday.
I'm talking about the parks, the playgrounds.
Yeah, so, so, so the first, I guess first thing is, you know, uh, the June 15th partial opening of county buildings. The second would be a follow-up for what you asked us to on the pool opening, pools opening on the 8th. And then the third part is to think about the remaining things. And, uh, and that would be in that Phase Three that Mr. Martin presented for y'all's consideration. And talking with him today, I, I mean, I really, we are allowing the parks to be used in, in some facet and to be reserved in some facets. Um, and so we really need, I think, to be consistent with that. Uh, recommendation is that, that the gymnasiums right now, the summer program right now, the day camps, we, we need to get our plan ready for that. We can't be ready by the 8th to do all that and, and that would take some extra. But certainly, um, rentals of pavilions, outdoor rentals, uh, of, of, of fields or parks, I, I think, I, I think we ought to consider that.
No, I, I, um, down by the, the library the other day, yesterday, I think it was, and they had a sign set as summer lunch program, so is that our summer lunch program? Is it up and running?
That's actually, you know, we, 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 we pulled with First Harvest and said, look, we, you know, uh, we weren't able to do that like a lot of, a lot of communities couldn't and so First Harvest is coming through and is being able to do that at drop-off locations.
Okay.
Which is very good.
Been doing that, yep.
Commissioner Thrift?
I just had a comment about opening up the parks and playgrounds. Dr. Lawton mentioned that it's not surface. So you, you, as far as contacting that disease, I don't know that those kids, heaven forbid, but I don't think they can contact it by touching the swing or going down a sliding board, whatever. And also he mentioned that the heat kills it. So I don't have a problem right now or when we're thinking about opening up the park completely. Because I.
Yeah, again.
I see that, that more people wanting to get out.
Are out.
And are out, you know, but, and then we still got the closed signs on that equipment. I don't know why they can't get out there and enjoy it. We're, we're not at this time, I guess, um, having any type of recreational ball games or whatever, so there, you know, we need to give the children something to do. By, by talking to Dr. Lawton, y'all heard him, it's not serviceable, the heat kills it. So I don't understand why we can't open it up.
Well, you know, he did say that about the heat and then I was wondering, what's the temperature in here, Joey? It's pretty cold in here.
It's cold right here and we, but anyways.
Turn, turn it up a little bit. Turn, turn it off a little bit. I guess on the conference call tomorrow, we can ask them specifically about, um, playgrounds.
We, we can and I, and I think, again, um, if, if we, if we go ahead and do the pools and do, do the outdoor activity areas that are either rentable, i.e. pavilions, playgrounds, things like that, open them up, you, you want to rent the park for something that's an outdoor activity, I think anything outdoor activity is fine for all those reasons. And then, and then the final phase that I'd like to come back with you on is that final everything else. Is, should we do, uh, the day camps for a period of time? Should we do, uh, a, a shortened recreation type event? We're having some requests for that. We need to wrap that for you to show you how it might look if we tried to do it with some time elements involved, i.e. school, i.e. running into other fall events. Uh, they're going to kick off here pretty quick. So I think tonight I was, you know, just hoping on like the building reopening, the pools and the outdoor activities, if, if you'd consider that.
June 8th?
I, I, I definitely.
Okay.
I agree with that. I mean, we don't have any type of signage about that, you know, we encourage social distancing or if, if we can do that. And then also, uh, we, we also do need to strongly consider about the day camps, because there's a lot of our citizens, every someone, who, who look for that for, especially because they're employed. And you know, for the last couple of months, they've been trying to do everything they can. You know, the daycares have been closed, uh, they still have been working. Mr. Mosley coughing, I don't know if he's good or not. I mean, but, I mean, that's the time of the day, you know? You don't, you don't, you're afraid to even cough and rail people.
You are. I've, I've heard that from people.
Right, but, uh, in all seriousness, uh, I mean, we, we, we do need to look and see, because I do know there are some, some day camps that are starting to open. So if they start opening, then it's going to be a floodgate on what are we going to do? Are we going to still go out of capacity that we've been doing for the last couple of years or are we going to shorten it?
I think by the, uh, by the mid-month, we'll be ready to.
Okay, right.
I, I think so. We've already had those discussions and we've taken the 32 item list that if you're going to run a day camp, things you've got to do. Um, I, I think we're all going to be surprised at how many of those things we're already doing in a day camp environment for separation.
The new norm?
Again, we need to analyze that because the other side of that, it is going to cause some manpower increase, which i.e. will drive up that cost, which will drive down our profit on the day camp. But there's some considerations to be made there and, and we want to, we want to show you those side by side. We've already kind of talked them, we want to pursue them on paper.
Okay.
We will have a decreased, to start out, as we talked about, a decreased capacity load of 50% at those pool locations. And I would suggest we do that in any other facility that we rent also. Now, in my mind, that would not include, uh, the Stafford Pavilion rental. That's an all indoor deal, recycling that air. I mean, unless y'all want to. But I, I might, I might see that come at the time you redo the gymnasiums and open those other indoor.
Since it's closed in, okay.
So, so you're saying keeping that one closed, correct?
Only that one, because it's totally indoor. Yeah, it's totally indoor.
Just one, one other question, Mr. Chairman.
But I don't know, it's hot in there, so.
It's hot in, it's hot, it's, 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 it's hot in there with the air conditioner on.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So the probability of, of this virus lasting in there is probably.
Trying to get y'all out of here.
But, but ju- just one question. Now, Joey, you, you know, with, with everything that's going on and, um, you know, we, we are a week away from, from Memorial Day, that was last Sunday. And then with everything else going on and, um, if there's a spike, and, and I, I don't know, like from a major event like, uh, like Memorial Day, or major event like, um, the, the protests and everything else that's going on. And, um, say there's a spike in Georgia and the governor does something different, because there, there's supposed to be a spike. There was supposed to be a spike because of the, um, of the relaxed precautions and that, I don't know if that really happened. But, but whenever, whenever there's a, a, a major event like Memorial Day, does anyone in here know, maybe I should ask, what's the goddamn was talking, Dr. Davis? Yeah. From, from Memorial Day, which was the 24th, 25th, that Monday, last Monday. You know, so it, what's the time?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Yeah, so, so, you know, so, so, you know, we talked about this, this, and I'm all for it, but we talking about doing something Monday, which is six days from now. And if the time period is two weeks.
Yeah, I, I think you're really okay and especially in the pool environment.
Okay, Dr. Brown.
Where, where the chlorine. Kill it. And so, uh.
Well, the president said bleach should kill it.
So we are, you know. Even as.
We, we on line anyway, we on line.
Yes, sir.
So, so even as, yeah, even as we open, we're still going to monitor with staff. We're still going to, we're going to encourage that social distancing. We're going to do all those things, um, to, to try to, to try to do that. And of course, we still have the weekly calls with Dr. Davis and, uh, with the Board of Health. So if, if we do see a spike or something, obviously we'll come back.
But, and, and, and I guess is the spike based on the state of Georgia? Cause he, he would, he would make his modifications based on Georgia. Not, not, this, this.
And he's doing all his though, we can share those with you, just on the coastal district.
Oh, okay.
So we do get a little closer to home.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing before we leave here, I, I, there's been a lot of talk about it. Maybe Jimmy's found the lifeguards. I know he was having a little bit of trouble. Opening up a pool on the 8th is like Mr. Gillis said, it may or may not happen, but you know, that's, one director down there with a lot of good folks working underneath him, that 90% of his activity is the youth. And I just want us to make sure that this is exactly what we want to do and support him in it. I mean, if we, if we're going to open it up, let's open it up and let's support him. If he don't have the lifeguards, then we don't need to be opening up the pools on the 8th, okay?
Well, I'm going by his email he sent me yesterday about opening on the 8th, so that's the reason.
And that decision, you know, he's going to be basing everything on what we tell him to do. And I mean, he's always tried to do that. He's done a great job, so I mean, let's, you know, we, we're opening up the, the, the one thing that everybody wants to do and that's to get outside and I just want to make sure that we are doing everything possible to support him in that, so. And it will be, I think that they can, will be a little bit more expensive than it normally is, but hopefully it'll all go right.
Ms. Stevens?
Yeah. Mr. Brown, the park in Riceburg, you know what I'm talking about?
Uh, the newfound.
The newfound park, the one that I mentioned years ago. Chairman, are you aware of that one?
Yeah.
Across from the Bribe Bay Park.
Oh, that's, I thought that the newfound park.
Yeah, donated piece property.
We need to, I guess, figure out what we're going to do. Clean it up, you know?
Right.
Will that considered, be considered as open too?
It's whatever the board desires. I mean, to me, it's an open air area.
And you, it's open air, you're right.
And, and so, uh, I, I think so. And then what I would do too is I'll, uh, we'll put together a presentation on that. Some of the board members may have not seen that. So, uh, we'll do some pictures and do an aerial and some of that stuff to, to see how the board wants to proceed with modifications.
Open park is open park.
Ken, you, you think we could have that ready? Cause I, I've heard some talk about that. Could we do something on that probably at the mid-month?
Mid-month, absolutely.
Also, uh, I ran into a issue the other day. I ran into a issue the other day and I think I sent all board members a picture. We don't know what we can do, but if we can come up with any suggestion to help prevent things like that from happening at the park where we, where little kids have to go, we need to do so, because I don't care who put it up there, who wrote it up there, that's not the place for writing like that.
Absolutely. I, I, I think, Commissioner Stevens, I think I responded about that, uh, you know, possibly, uh, put up some type of signage, not just at that park, but all parks about vandalism and, and also.
Language?
The language and.
Graffiti.
And graffiti. And also not just saying that it's prohibited, but what we would do if we find.
Well, I can tell you what Mr. Martin will do.
Right.
You'll be gone from the.
Right, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you don't, he don't, he don't put up with that and Commissioner Stevens is, I, I would suggest, um, those signs be raised to six foot.
And, and that can, okay.
I mean, that was what, I think if you get them high enough.
Right height.
Right, right. I mean, I, I saw it today, but I just, I can tell you, I believe those signs need to be higher up. I mean, I know we did the best we could with it, but you know, somebody's going to find something to do, it's just like a, yeah, a brand new window, somebody's going to bust them. So let's just try to, that's the only thing I could think of. That'd be a suggestion. And he, and Jimmy had mentioned one time about doing some signs, so maybe we need to look at signage all the way around. I don't know if it's in his budget, but.
I know we hadn't met in a while and I, I know we love each other, but come on, man.
One more thing before you know, get Debbie to follow up with this. Uh, actually by this Friday, ACCG is wanting to know if anybody in the counties were planning to do the Legislative Leadership Conference on Jekyll Island, which is September 30th through October 2nd.
Would, 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 would the virus still be there?
No, no, but, but, well, it's hot.
It's hot.
It's hot.
Yeah, it'd be hot.
So.
And it's saltwater, Polly.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm just going by the recommendations of, of our president. Everything kills it.
Yeah, tell her to send me information, I might be interested.
Oh, September, well, we don't really have any detailed information. It's just a survey from ACCG to say, do you think you might attend? Because if not, based on what they get statewide, they may postpone that.